All right, we're gonna get going. We have six thirty-two. I want to be respectful with everyone's time. Um, we'll call this meeting before. This is the two month meeting of the Plenary Plan Board. Um, the board will obviously, we're in a temporary setting. We appreciate any patience that folks wanna have as we try to work through logistics. With tools, with microphones, we'll be working beside the other table. So, we appreciate tonight's discussion. Full call with Jared Gomes from Arneado. In large.
President.
Dave Taylor.
President.
Uh, we'd like to welcome Cheryl Galloway, our newest member of the Plenary Board. The ring up, uh, being the most effective yet, being the chief of art on the relatable chair. Uh, joining us tonight, we have Todd Mano, who is our assistant solicitor, Plenary Board Counselor. We have Addison Smith, who is our interim mission officer, and probably the owner of the company. And we have Eddie Sella, who is the Plenary Board. Then we break into Agenda Item Number One, um, which is the existing property LLC, uh, coming to us to discuss, uh, the relationship with the plan, the application, uh, clarification, interpretation of many of the conditions. Land development, operating the plan for me after plan decision given, uh, May two, two thousand twenty-five, uh, in the vital activity in common, um, uh, application here and that, uh. Thank, uh, thank you, everyone, the board, the management of the board. I think I'll just leave you there. Uh, we'll call it, but I'm all right. But I will be able to talk to you about the board's ability to do this. Appreciate the opportunity for our experience. As you know, as the board, we had, uh, uh, an accident in the primary, uh, project department. For the, for the construction of a primary park in the town of Tivin. We had several meetings with the Plan Board and, uh, following with a decision that was issued, uh, by the board. And the board presented several conditions at the last meeting prior to the decision.
A very robust discussion with respect to the conditions and probably the most important, which was the determination of order. And the board made very clear, uh, its prerogative as well as expanding that we ensure that hydraulic model was prepared. And prepared, uh, in conjunction with both Stonebridge, uh, Border District and North Tivin Water District. And one of the issues that we discussed at that time was sequencing. And our concern was that we did not want to be delayed unnecessarily by either Stonebridge or North Tivin. Should their water model not be prepared, but we concluded that if we use all our best efforts to work collectively with both border districts to do the hydraulic, uh, hydraulic model. Uh, our engineer was confident that that would take place. I can, I can say confidently that we're in the process of doing that. And as I indicated at the hearing, uh, and as I've been saying throughout the process, we believe that there is a viable and very feasible pathway towards order, which we will obviously, which we obviously have the burden to show and prove to have preliminary plan. Um, when we saw the decision, our concern was with the language of the condition. And, um, specifically, if you look at the last paragraph of condition number one, which says that this information shall be provided and approved by the town as part of preliminary plan and application submission. So the, the concern, the question that's raised by the applicant is it seems that the language creates a two-tiered system. One where we are to submit the application, uh, specifically the hydraulic model, uh, prior to being able to submit preliminary application. And there seems to be an approval by the town of the hydraulic model before we can proceed to preliminary plan. And our, our, our discussion and as we've indicated to you at the last hearing, we just wanna be able, we're not opposed to giving you the information that you need in order to do your job, assess the viability of the project and the feasibility of it specifically as it, uh, pertains to order. So we just don't wanna be delayed. And as I hear from my client consistently, we do not wanna be put in the penalty box. Meaning that we've got all this information, but there's, we can't give it to anyone. We can't proceed to the next level of order. So we're, we're simply, um, I, and I think that, and after I looked at any tapes and, and the transcript, the, the concept was that we would submit the hydraulic, uh, plan, uh, at preliminary plan and for review and for approval. And we wouldn't, you know, the preliminary plan would be subject to that hydraulic model being approved. Uh, and the hydraulic model would need to be, uh, benchmarked, I guess is the word, with, uh, Stonebridge Water District and North Tivin District. So that's what we're asking. We're asking that essentially that sentence be modified to reflect the intent, which is that the information would be provided by the applicant as part of the preliminary plan submission.
Mr. Mancini, to expedite this matter, I had provided the board prior to this meeting with your email explaining your concern with that language.
Yeah.
I've also provided them with some draft language, which I'm gonna show you in just a second.
Okay.
Um, and I think we will be able to address your concern very quickly and efficiently. Is that too small? Can I, John, take a note of that, please?
And, and I think that, that addresses the issue. I mean, the, the first sentence is fine. Um, second sentence is obviously part of what we're gonna discuss during the public hearing process.
Right.
Uh, and, um, and the last sentence, the termination of the town, sort of, um, have to be above situations or for review discussion. Yeah, that's fine. We clearly understand that the board is gonna review the hydraulic model and any approval will be subject to, uh, to that model.
It was never the intent to have to approve your hydraulic model or certifying the application as complete.
Okay.
Yes.
There's no process law for that.
Exactly. Okay, that, that's fine with me. Um, so moving on to another concern we have, and I'm not sure it's shared in your email. Um, it's a similar issue. If you go to number seven, it says that Tivin's school department shall be consulted with and approved in writing to design for school bus turnaround off area submitted as part of preliminary plan application. Why should there is it seems that I can't go to preliminary plan unless the school department approves the design. Again, we don't have a problem admitting it to them. We just don't want to have preliminary plan delayed if the school department or room hasn't gotten to it or, um, isn't, hasn't approved it. But we don't have a problem that, um, those.
So it's the second paragraph of condition number seven, is what it's saying?
Yes, yes.
And I think the same is true. It's never our, it was never our intent. And to speak to the board, I know to make look for something prior to certification of the maintenance.
Yeah.
But I don't think that says that it has to be approved in writing prior to certification of the maintenance.
It says submitted as part of the preliminary plan application. So it's maybe not prior to, but it's definitely simultaneous with, and it's just a I don't have a problem that we have, we have that approved prior to the preliminary, preliminary plan approval or preliminary plan would be subject to.
You just strike the word application and say preliminary plan decision.
Yeah, that's fine.
And maybe strike the word submitted. So it just says as part of the preliminary plan decision.
Yeah, we're doing.
Prior to preliminary plan decisions.
I think we just totally fine with that. I think it's in the spirit of what we're going after. I think moving to get to preliminary plan, we'll just wanna consult with the school department, make sure we have representation here to sort of voice appropriately, and I think we'll be fine. Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that. Again, again, it's the concern of approval prior to submission. And, and my last question is with, uh, number thirteen. And, and there it says the planning board may require that a structural engineering review be conducted to ensure that the buildings will be designed and constructed to withstand the quarry blasting that occurs nearby. So, so the question is what standard that is. Um, we're gonna build these units clearly through the building code. But I don't know if there's another separate engineering review. We, we look, we don't, we don't even know how, what, what the nearest quarry blast is. Uh, so our concern is that if there's another standard, then one are known now so that we can prepare for it. Uh, if there's a specific design code, uh, for that type or other than the building code.
Mr. Mancini, I think this is just putting you on notice that the board may require that information during the preliminary plan hearing process if evidence comes out that, that these develop, these buildings or structures could be subject to, uh, structural deficiencies because of blasting upon fish roads. That's, that's fine.
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm forgetting. It's the.
Different hearing.
It's around the two hours.
Thank you.
Okay. That's fine. Cause it's not, it's not a requirement. It's not a shell. It's just clear, it clearly says that what we can.
Correct.
And so we, we just wanna, essentially more of informational purpose. So we will prepare, present you what we, we think is necessary for review on that.
So, so I guess I'm speaking for the board again. If we present evidence that no structural engineering is required.
Yeah, right. It's not a prerequisite to filing this submission.
No, certification of the maintenance.
Okay, I'm good. That's, that's all I have.
Are you asking the board to present or prepare an amended decision now?
I would ask the board to vote on the modifications of this existing decision and then file a recorded amended decision.
So I would be happy to make a motion to approve the modifications, um, for, um, our, um, conditions. In all, with, with, with respect to all three areas that we've discussed.
Just the first.
Well, just the first two, and then.
So as I understand, the motion is to amend the decision as to conditions one and seven, as we have discussed this evening. First, number one, as was presented on the screen, and the board, and number two, as we brief, and number seven. Yeah. Condition number seven.
We, we have two suggestions that Ashley made and Mr. Mancini accepted.
Understood. Do we have a second?
Second.
Who was that?
Cheryl.
Oh, Cheryl.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Uh.
Standing.
All right. DA is abstaining. All right, passes.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
We'll get that high.
Yeah.
All right. So, yeah, we'll ask Mr. Mancini.
No, we'll send you a copy probably at the end of the week. It's funny to see you.
All right.
Moving on to Agenda Item Number Two, United Culture, fifteen William S. Canning Boulevard and Aquinix Drive in Circumvane, Rhode Island. This is the concept plan for a major land development application. This is a planning board open public meeting, um, around the construction of a proposed seven thousand five hundred square foot cannabis retail establishment uh, at fifteen William S. Canning Boulevard, AP two oh three lot one one four. Uh, it's in the east side of the William S. Canning Boulevard. Uh, it's the highway commercial zoning district. Um, and just a footnote, just to remind folks of what a open public meeting is for the planning board. It's a public meeting held in pursuant to the open meeting laws, Rhode Island general laws forty-two dash forty-six dash one. This is not a public hearing. This does not require general or specific notice beyond that required to comply with the open meeting laws. Planning board is not required to accept public comment, but if there is, and you, we may entertain and just keep that to a minimum standard here. So with that, we would turn it over to the start.
Good evening, Bill Spender.
Could you just use the mic, please, Mr. Spender?
Good evening, Bill Spender from Civil Engineering Concepts. Uh, looking tonight is John Burnier. And he's the Chief Operating Officer, uh, for the project. And, uh, can I go over to the east and try and talk as long as I can?
Yeah, one, here, take the wire off this.
Can you hear me?
Oh, yeah.
So. The, uh, property is located on William S. Canning Boulevard. Uh, there's an existing structure there. This represents existing structure. Aquinix Drive is a street that runs alongside it, since essentially it's on a, on Aquinix and William S. Canning. The lot is approximately one point one acres. There's an existing structure there that looks. Another view of the existing structure from Aquinix. Second view. And essentially what we'd like to do is demolish the existing structure and replace it with something that would look a little bit more modern, fit into the neighborhood a little bit better. This is very similar to John's project built in, uh, some Swansea, excuse me. Um, it will be a campus retail facility. Um, what we'd like to do is realign the parking so that we have a little bit better control. Right now, it's a half hazard paved area where cars come in and out with, with no, no traffic control. Um, essentially, we, potential for a drive-through later on. At this point, we're not asking the board for that. But we're just gonna be upfront with you that there, there could possibly be a drive-through around, around the building. Um, and, uh, it's approximately seventy-five hundred square feet. The existing building is, uh, approximately sixty-three hundred square feet. Um, we're gonna reduce the amount of previous surface, um, for the project, another view. And that's essentially, so, um, I'm gonna turn it over to John, because people are looking for.
Basically, the big concern of the prop, the property is, you know, it's kinda unsafe the way it is now. Anybody's familiar with, if anybody's familiar with the property and the parking lot is completely trashed. You can't tell where the parking lot is, where the Aquinix Drive is. Uh, there's no, any, everybody comes into multiple different angles. We wanna move, we wanna get rid of the existing building. Those are multiple problems. There's a lot of hidden spots and people, not people hiding as well. A lot of corners where you can't see in, which is an issue with security, which we don't wanna have people voiding. So we wanna put up a strictly, you know, rectangle square building. We say seventy-five hundred, it was anywhere from sixty-five to seventy-five hundred square feet. We wanna move the building back a little bit further so it's not so close to the cannabis lot. Make it so that it's more of a direct way to come in, so you don't have multiple people, you know, one person coming from here, one person coming from over here, so on with the exiting. Um, the design, the purpose of it, mostly industrial over there as it is already, with Aquinix fasteners in the garage, commercial ones they have there. And this commercial condo complex that's here as well. So that's why we went with the design of the building that we decided to go with. Um, he touched briefly on the drive-through. The only reason we would possibly do a drive-through in the future is just to keep traffic full, so people, and keep people in and out. Wouldn't cause a lot of cars in the parking lot and keep flow going. Um, and also aesthetically, this building don't look as nice. It's sand to the concrete. We're gonna try to make it look a lot better. We're not putting, we don't wanna put up some crazy modern looking building that doesn't fit the area, that draws, you know, other people to pay attention to it. We wanted to go to a simple look of the building that will match everything else that's there. Um, we already have zoning approval to do this in this location, so we're not asking for that. We're just basically asking to knock out the existing building, put up something nicer for Tivin, make the parking lot better. We've also discussed that we would pay to pave Aquinix Drive as well, so it wouldn't be a burden on the town to have to take care of that, seeing how we have to do X and Y a lot already. And our big concern is, so we are on a timeline. The state, the way the state is gonna roll out the licensing process this time around is they're gonna give us nine months. Once they grant us the final license, they give us nine months to get the project built. And the reason that they're doing a nine-month project build time is so many people, the last time around they got licenses, then went and started booking and trying to get approvals of towns, and they failed, and it was a waste of time. The town didn't make the tax revenue, so forth and so forth. So basically, we're coming in to look and see if there's any issue with what people think we'd be doing, so that we can get the building ordered, get the building demolished, get the building up, and move forward to help get extra tax revenue to the town to keep this operation.
Um, perhaps you can go back to the seat and we, just because we got one mic.
Yeah.
Look, I, this isn't a questions here. Can I grab that for you? You guys can take that seat.
All right.
All right.
Uh, we wanna open up questions from the board. I have questions, but we'll see if anyone else.
Just very, very briefly. Mr. Spender, was this project granted a use variance previously? Is, is that why it's here?
Yes, you, you've got the use variance from the board.
Okay, so I wanna make sure that it's just that project.
They don't have any approval for it.
Right.
Well, that was maybe one of my first questions is, I can't remember the use table off the top of my head, but we have drive-throughs and commercial, or general commercial.
Though.
Though.
The way that it was amended most recently was that it was amended, it used to be in the use table that it would say like restaurant, and it would say restaurant with drive-through. And it, so what we did was we took that drive-through out of restaurant and just listed uses and then said any of the above uses with the drive-through would trigger a special use permit, but that's only in certain sections of the use table and not for all uses that would propose a drive-through. So that's something that we would need to look at, um, because I think under the current structure, you can't even get a drive-through with a special use permit unless you're within the category that has that line item in the use table, and that may be something that we want to address.
The, the drive-through is something completely down the line. The building, we're gonna build the building as, as it is. We're not gonna, it's, a drive-through can be added very easily after the fact if we get approval variance and get approvals, if not even something. Basically, I just won't be wanting to bring it up as your concerns, or you guys can stop talking amongst the board. I know we had spoken that it was a possible gap somewhere.
I, 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 with the applicant, and we talked about this, and I said, this is, this is potentially an issue that we need to look at. But my advice to you is if you have thoughts of a drive-through, talk, bring it up with the board initially, even if you're gonna go for it later on, because we will probably have to have that discussion about how to deal with the fact that this particular use doesn't have a drive-through option, and whether the board would wanna do that or not. And at least this way, if the applicant is, I think it's something we have to address one way or the other, because right now, you can only propose a drive-through under certain categories of the use table. And I think that's problematic.
Yes, I mean, drive-through, we're not building with a drive-through right now. We just wanna bring up the fact that eventually, we would like to know if it's an option. If we start realizing, it would help with keeping the lot empty and keeping not so many people in there if you get a drive-through. Cause you have a lot of pre-orders. So if the pre-orders can all go through the drive-through, people don't have to stop, park, get out of their car, you know, so on and so forth. It'll keep the parking lot empty. It'll keep you a lot safer. But we don't, as of right now, all we're looking for is just to get, yep, that building, that building's ugly, that building looks good. What you're saying makes sense. It's gonna be safer. It's pushing backwards in the road. You're redoing the parking lot. You know, you guys give a thumbs up. We like this color. We like that color, so on and stuff like that. Uh, that's, so.
Any other questions from the Plenary Board?
Yes, I, um, I appreciate what you're saying and, and agree with much of it. But I am a little disappointed in the design of the building. I think it looks like a metal warehouse, um, a box metal warehouse. More like a nineteen seventies or eighties design than what I would call modern design. In that very neighborhood, just a block or two away, there is an existing cannabis retail business that's really quite attractive. It's a new building. It has dormers. It has fenestration. It has a lot of really nice features. And it's a stick built. It's wooden. Um, and just, uh, two blocks north of where we're sitting tonight, there's another retail cannabis business. It's very modern, but also very attractive. Um, so I would urge you to think twice about that ugly metal box. The other concern I have is the sea of asphalt. Um, what, what you have shown us in, in the, um, in the materials that was handed out to the planning board members, um, not a blade of grass, not, not, and not any landscaping, um, just a sea of asphalt completely surrounding the building. I'd like to see some landscaping. I understand you've got a parking issue. We need to have enough, uh, asphalt for good circulation and parking. But I think a lot more can be done than just pave it over. That, that also is nineteen seventies and nineteen eighties thinking, not modern. So, those are my two comments.
So I actually had our design team remove the, uh, what we had in the trees, sort of, bordering the property, because we wanted to, we didn't wanna make, dolly it up and make it look like, we wanna try to, we wanted to see plain as it was gonna look like. We're showing you the back of the building right there. The front of it actually has a very nice canopy. The marble that's along, it's actually marble that's along here. Bottom has an LED LED. It's not as plain Jane as it looks right there. The reason why, we went with something, so there is a canopy that goes out. It's a very modern canopy. If you're familiar with Swansea at all, the Target that's up in Swansea, directly across the street, we have a no location there. If you see that building, it's nothing but, it's not, it's the brothers from Plain Jane. Um, we'd be doing a similar aesthetics here that we did up there, which anybody's more than welcome to come by for private tours, who it looks like. Um, we do have, we just wanted to keep it look simple for the initial. But we do have plans to put curbing in, shrub, shrubs, trees surrounding the whole backside to separate where Aquinix fasteners is and where the host, uh, host connection industrial complex is. So we will have trees going around. There is grass there as well. So what we're showing on the bird's eye is just what's in the asphalt. There is still all grass that goes up to a fence that's over there as well.
So I would say, maybe come around the next time.
Yes.
Let's make sure it's gonna, it's.
Yep.
Have the landscaping built in. Any other questions, comments?
The only other question I have is traffic studies. It's a very busy area. Have you done an updated traffic study, just to share the safety?
So just to repeat the question from the television audience is, have you done any traffic studies here? That was gonna be one of my comments. That is one of the worst interchanges.
Yes.
That, like, eighth of a mile is awful.
And I have the, so we are not gonna add any traffic to the area. What we actually do is, so we have no traffic studies, but many of them at many locations. I'm from Tivin, one of the staff road, uh, so I know that. Better than you can even imagine. Um, the big problem over there is everybody going to the gas station on northeast alternatives. Everybody trying to come out of that area, and that's right where it goes from two lane down to one. And that's where the biggest problem is. You have the other road that comes out to, uh, we had a little developmentism far ago. So you have a lot going on right there. We're not gonna add any traffic by us putting this here. We're gonna take, our whole goal is to take traffic away from northeast alternatives, to have instead of them going to there, them coming up the street where it's easier for them to turn in, pull in and pull out. So us being there was actually gonna help free up congestion of what happens from northeast alternatives. And that's done by the studies that we did too. We're not gonna bring any more, anybody else to here. Our just whole goal is to take away. I mean, when you have a McDonald's and they build a Wendy's or now you know what's the new, the K's the new one, everybody goes and tries the new place once. Now our whole goal is that we're gonna be better than what they are, and people, even if we take half the business and northeast does, we know what they do. So half is what it ends up, it went up to for the tax revenue for the town. It's gonna break up the traffic from going in there. It's gonna ease congestion. So it's actually quite the opposite there. The days of it causing a massive flood of cars are completely over. And Stafford Road in general is an issue. Everybody, I mean, I've never seen anything like it. Uh, you know. I have a friend who owns a business across from George's Gas Station, and if you go there at four o'clock in the afternoon, from that street, like, all the, George's, it's, it's the Dollar General, it's the line of traffic. So we're not gonna contribute any of that. We're actually helping in there. So you are protecting the study. You're allowing traffic studies.
Yeah, it's part of it.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. Um, just to confirm, retail, no, no, okay. Um, hours of operation we saw was eight, uh, ten to eight, uh, no, I'm sorry, I got that wrong. Eight AM to ten PM. Okay, so lighting will be another consideration.
Yep.
Uh, this board is very supportive of dark sky compliant lighting.
Yep. Same thing, we've been through Swansea, yeah, if you see our location in Swansea, you know.
Okay.
Right now, there's no, there's no direction of anything in that part of the city.
Yeah, I, I generally think that this will be a positive addition to the status quo. You know, to take a little stretch of road, that's a bit of a waste of it out there, so. Any other comments or questions from the applicant here?
And again, we didn't wanna go crazy designing something, you guys come and say absolutely not.
Sure.
So we just wanted to know, we had positive.
Last question is, when do you anticipate coming back for preliminary?
Oh, just starting the process, I have, we think we're gonna have to do, and we're gonna pull that together. I suspect, uh, I would suspect we're trying to get it pretty robust, I could.
And when do you anticipate getting a license in that nine-month time clock starting?
They're supposed to be issuing with the license. So I mean, basically, our thing is have, you know, like, order the building sooner or later. We get the building ordered, and stop moving forward demolition process, and just putting the ball in motion prior. Um, either way, just, just getting moved, just getting, yeah.
Other questions?
What's the size of the building?
Sorry?
Size in the building?
Sixty-five to seventy-five.
It'll be seventy, more than seventy-five hundred square feet.
It'll be more than?
No.
No more than?
We're about sixty-five hundred square feet, because we have.
Really triggers minor to major.
Well, it's, you know, staying, definitely staying under, under the wire. But it's meaning more towards sixty-five hundred square feet than it was the seven. So the existing building is seventy-two hundred or seventy-four hundred square feet.
Any public, very quick public comment?
I thought that, the last time you were here, you said that each district can only have one supplier?
Not supplier, one retail store.
One retail store?
Yes.
And you, Newport County is part of that, right?
Right.
Well, there's already one in Portsmouth.
Yeah, that's a different district than when we are, when you're issuing another license, that one's already, we've already been approved by zoning, so this has.
But that's Newport, but we're Newport County, so you're saying there's gonna be two in Newport County?
Yes.
I thought you said there was only one.
In our district, so, I need to list to break down the districts, each town can vote for it, so actually, alright, so I, I have to think about massing around, yeah, actually, the difference between it is Little Compton can vote for one, and Little Compton denied it, and again, it's a Jamestown, Middletown, Newport, Portsmouth, and Tiverton, I think all four, and maybe Greenwich or Jamestown as well, all four in that same district. If the town folks do approve it, yes or no, then they can go for the next step. Um, there is also actually another one that's gonna be in Newport as well, so you have one in Newport and one in Portsmouth. But what's going on in the island over there, and what's going on in Tiverton is just too separate.
So, yeah, so just, if the applicant can't get a license from the state, like, this is a, right? So really, it's you securing the license from the state, which is sort of the, the final, which is sort of not an approval. And the state wouldn't issue a license if it was going to be a violation of.
Passes through.
Yeah. Okay.
So the reason we did it, the way we did it is us having to do it first, put this in person by two, get the license.
Sure. Anything else? All right, thank you, appreciate it. All right, we're gonna move to our next agenda item here, just, there we go. Uh, so, to a status update introduction, University of Rhode Island Groundwater Study Principles and Projects.
I do have a hard-won presentation that I'd like to.
Sure, we can attempt to make that happen, um, while we're.
Do you have it on a laptop or? I have it on my laptop, I have this desktop table, whatever is needed.
HD and I, if possible.
It's not, this is not gonna go very far, so are you comfortable with me just hitting your, advancing slides, or?
Okay.
I can sit next to it.
You, right.
Do I have to sign out or anything?
Not our usual location.
Or, I can give you a class rather than just.
Um, Stu, any, you are our liaison to this, the TO, before we get the presentation?
No, no. Um, I, I'd just like to say that Sony, a tour for Alex from URI, I did come out here, they came out to Tiverton, what, ten days, uh, two weeks ago, and we did do a tour of the study area, which is basically those portions of Tiverton that are not serviced by the town water or by sewer, but rely on wells and septic systems. And, uh, somebody and her colleagues were talking about the need to, to have a number of wells, um, to monitor, um, to give us over a period of time, a database, um, showing, uh, not only, uh, pollution issues with the wells, but also the refill of wells, but Sony will explain that a lot better than I can. Go ahead, Sony.
We're gonna ask him to use that one with.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I would project.
Um, good, uh, good evening. Uh, happy to be here to be presenting, uh, our preliminary ideas here for sampling of groundwater well. Um, the, uh, the reason that we're doing this study is to look at whether or not, like, you know, like, for the infrastructure development or any kind of, um, growth that can happen into this, the, uh, time to return, or in, you know, the groundwater will impact it due to any kind of development. But also looking into, um, the grandstands of groundwater first, before even going into what's gonna happen in the future. So what we're trying to do here is, if you can go next, um, I have a team here. Uh, my name is Sori Kalan, and I'm hydrologist, I'm also water quality modeler. I am the department of geosciences of causes of environmental life sciences in URI. Uh, my colleagues, Tom Gobing is, um, a hydrogeologist, and Chris, Chris Zunell is also a hydrogeologist. In this work, I have two graduate students here, uh, Irina and Andreas, um, PhD student, master student, who are heavily involved in working with GIS, you know, um, they will be going out in the field, working data. Uh, we'll be doing data analysis, we'll be putting those data into, you know, the instrument to, uh, to get, do the lab analysis, so. They're a part of the team. Um, Mary Kay is also my grad student, um, Tony is from Boise, so he can all the way to see how town hall meetings go. So we're gonna be well here, um, next slide please. Um, so this gives, uh, you a general, uh, you know, idea of why and what we're doing. So conduct a comprehensive groundwater well assessment. I'm one of the programs with the idea of evaluating the current state of groundwater and understanding how, what the potential risks are in helping to make some, you know, informed decision and planning, uh, forward. Next please. So what are we doing here? How are we identifying locations? So first step to doing groundwater analysis is to identify wells, you know, like, how are you, we're gonna do that? So we develop a risk map, um, using GIS tool, um, for, you know, general sampling, because that's necessary for us. We can sample every single well, um, we have to take a representative sample, and that representative sample has to be identified in a way that it'll be valuable information for us. So what we did here is, next slide please. So these are all geographic information system data, um, for those, um, who are here, um, who know GIS, great, who do not know. Um, you know, we overlay different maps, uh, and then do a sort of like a, you know, vulnerability assessment here. So on the left, in the data that goes into our GIS-based model is land use data. Uh, all of these data comes from Rhode Island Geographical Information System, which is RIGES, they are all available online. So land use data, and then there's land cover, there's digital elevation model, which basically is a topography data, and on the, the little legend that shows you, you know, what's the general topography of the area to the, to the left side of this digital elevation model, you can see all the dark black areas, which is basically shallow, very, very shallow area, white ones are slightly elevated. It says about hundred and two, you know, I think this is gonna be a meter, um, so it's one meter, uh, resolution. Uh, next slide please. Then we also have water table depth, uh, and in the water table depth, the legend, you know, we use this one to five ranking method to come up with the vulnerability, sort of like a very crude risk map. Uh, so one represents the water depth from eleven to fourteen feet, and this is a very crude water table depth map coming from RIGES. We do have, uh, like, order nineteen sixties map also, which identifies some well locations. Uh, we're gonna be digitizing them, our stage geologist, Brian Savitt, is actually digitizing them. He was doing that today, so we have some information in that map also. So water table depth tells you, you know, where the wells, the water table's gonna be much shower versus where you're gonna have a deeper water table. And then the drainage condition, the drainage condition basically tells you the hydrologic condition of soil. Um, some soils stays wet all the time, some soils are dry. And when you, uh, you know, like, dig a soil pit, uh, some soils will have, like, you know, will be dry all the way, you know, beyond, like, two feet, two feet, I mean. Um, some of them will be, you know, you'll start seeing some brownish color at the sixteen inches depth itself. Uh, what does that mean is like that water is rising at that level, causing the soil to become sort of like in a rainstorm state, so there's some iron deposits, nines deposits going on because of water table going up. And that's indicating a poor, poorly drained soil. And the very poorly drained soil excessively well, drained soil will be obvious, like, so, and talk about burnout pools, wetlands, you know, those are categorized as oversaturated. So if you look at the drainage condition here, you can see there are many, uh, you know, locations within town, within, within this map, you know, like this red which is poorly drained, which means it stays, you know, the water table is much higher. So what does that would mean is like, even with a little bit of rain, there's a chance of, you know, generating a lot more runoff, because it's, the water table is higher. And then you have five which is green, which is basically at the north, lot, lot of them are at the north, and very little, um, in the southern area. Those are excessively green, that means they are, they have good soil, you know, um, the water table is probably deeper there. But then you can, you have lots of, like, in-between, that, you know, somewhat poorly drained and well-drained, um, soil. So what we did here, next slide please. Uh, and, uh, one more, so this is another hydrologic, so, no, before, let's focus, sorry. So this is another layer that we use is hydrologic soil, um, group. This is very much similar to what you saw before, that the one that you saw before is, you know, further categorized from this class. In hydrology, when we do analysis, we use four classes, A, B, C, and D, uh, to simplify, you know, our work. Uh, so it tells you on the right, you can see on counts, like, C is basically, uh, poorly drained soil. And if you look at the number of counts there, it's like three hundred and fifty more. That means that there's a lot more soil type in the area which are categorized as poorly drained. And if your water, if you have well in those locations, then they are, there are the chances that, you know, they're gonna be contaminated much easier. Uh, in the future, so next slide please. Now, this is very technical slide here, it's gonna be only, you know, uh, those who have GIS, um, background will be able to understand. This is basically showing you how we built a model together. This is a model builder, and we have experts here sitting in my back, who, uh, you know, created these, um, GIS-based model. And very simple overlay of all of these layers, and putting equal weights on all of these. So we're not prioritizing anything for this first cut, this is a very crude analysis. Uh, so we're emphasizing each of these input data that goes in equally, like, you know, like, giving, so if we have three input layer, you give thirty-three percent weights on each of them. We have a little more than three, so you know what the drill is here. So, and in the end, what we get is a sort of like a vulnerability, a risk map, so next slide please. So this is the result, this basically shows you where the, the areas are highly vulnerable, and this is gonna be our guideline to really, uh, go sample groundwater wells, like homeowners. We, we did not in, include, you know, the, we did not overlay information here on homeowners, like, just to keep making sure that data is kept confidential, we don't wanna identify homeowners, and that's the rule of science, um, that I follow. Um, but if you look at this map, this is a suitability map, and tells you, um, there are areas where, you know, uh, the groundwater's gonna be vulnerable, and there are some areas where it's gonna be okay. So our goal is to identify homeowners with your help, um, you know, along this, you know, like, towards the western edge, and we will, you know, go up transect, a little bit up to the middle section of the, um, of the map that you can see, and we will do a, uh, sort of like perpendicular to the water body, uh, transects, identify well, homeowners, and sample those. Um, so that's the general idea here, and I'd love to hear from you all, like, what you would like to see, and if you're homeowners here, please volunteer, help me find, um, you know, sites here. Um, and I'm open to, um, hear your ideas, um, you know, like, if there are certain places where we must sample, please let us know, we will definitely reach out to get the data from, from the landfill site, because the land wells along the landfill site, if they are still in operating condition, um, we might not need to put any well owners there. But we would also like to monitor some of the wells continuously, if that is allowed. Uh, um, but generally, we'd like to get well samples so that we can do nutrients analysis, like, you know, nitrate, phosphate, uh, we would also like to do some pathogen analysis, because, um, certain locations might not happen to every single well, but definitely gonna do nutrients, um, analysis of these water. Yeah.
Why was Stafford Pond on that map?
So Stafford Pond, we did not include on this map because they're served by public water supply system. So we're focusing mostly on groundwater wells. Unless you think that we have to include that area, because we, everything north of Burmese Road, right? That's on, um, the public, uh, sewer and public water supply. And that's, that's why.
Not all public sewer, yeah, not all public.
Well, that's good to know.
Non-pond is on.
Non-pond, yeah.
Non-pond is on by people.
So non-pond is?
South.
South, yeah, it's in the. Right there, non-pond is right there, yeah. Yeah, we, we do have those, it's just everything north, Stafford. Further north, right, yeah, so, uh, non-pond is there, and you know.
Yes.
Yes, that cannot be.
My best.
Right. Um, but again, you know, we're happy to take, um, any comments, any suggestions. Uh, our goal is either next week, or within next two weeks, I, you know, like, come up with, we have a letter, you know, drafted already, so that could be sent out to some of the homeowners who are willing to volunteer their, you know, uh, groundwater.
So, so again. So again, I, I'd just like to mention that, that we're looking not at the whole town of Tiverton.
No.
We are excluding those four parts of Tiverton that have sewer and water through. North Tiverton Fire District, and Stone Bridge Fire District. We're only looking at those parts of town that rely entirely on wells and septic systems.
Right.
And, and the reason why we're looking at, at those parts of town is that there are some anecdotal issues popping up now about, uh, about well recharge levels, particularly during drought situations, and about some contamination issues are. Are, um, we don't have a, a, an aquifer, an underground reservoir, so to speak, in the town of Tiberian. So our wells are, are drilled into fissures in the bedrock. And that is not a very reliable way to get water. Um, it can cause problems. And secondly, a lot of our soils is, as Sony pointed out, a lot of our soils are not very suitable for breaking down nitrogen. Um, and uh, and if they're saturated soils, um, then nitrogen can reach out of septics into wells. So that gives us, if we get a better handle on that, then we'll understand how much more residential development we can handle in those areas of town, which is largely south of Boulder Marshall. And largely, and, and a little bit of the very, of the very eastern uh portion, um, on the eastern side of Stafford Pond. Um, but, but there are, there are development pressures and some fairly large developments or applications are now coming in. So we're just trying to look at the infrastructure to make sure we can handle all of that.
There are two public wells at the south end that I, will you be using the data from those?
If there is data available, yes. We would like any and every data that's available.
They report to state.
Okay, good, okay. So the G O H, to, okay, to Department of Health?
Yes.
Okay, I, I will reach out to Shannon and come on who keeps all these, you know, data, well data, so whatever data is available is good.
Let me just say on behalf of the board, we're glad that you and your team are doing this. This is an incredibly important topic for the town. I do have a couple of questions to help facilitate, hopefully facilitate the study. Um, what is the ideal number of wells to have a, a monitoring here, what's statistically significant?
There is no magic number. It all depends on like, so I'll ask like a question to you first, like how many household has well here? If you were to give me that ballpark number, like how many homeowners, like what I'm talking, a thousand?
That's a really great question.
But the person I have to help is most probably.
So I would again, reach out to Shannon and try to get all that data. Um, and, you know, like if you really wanna make this statistically significant sampling, you know, you wanna have this ten percent representation, but if you have hundred, one thousand wells, you know, hun, the ten percent is already one hundred wells. So we have to also think about what's logistically feasible. Um, in, as I said, more the barrier, we would definitely like to install the long-term monitoring, you know, like the in-aller is in some of these very, you know, like the um, the, the groundwater that are on the edge, so that we can monitor drop in packs also.
So, so based on this initial suitability map, is there a, are we going up to target number of homeowners now? Do we have like a shortlist or are we looking to like start from scratch to work through?
It's gonna be, I mean, I would say from scratch unless actually having identified any.
Yeah, I think what, what we'll need to do is take their, take their analysis and, and lay that with parcel data, which will give us address data.
Mm-hmm.
I've reached out to uh the town of Charlestown, because the, they did similar work in Charlestown and Charlestown had some materials that they used to notify the public.
Yes.
So I, I know their wastewater person well. I've asked if he will share that material that they provided, so that we can develop essentially a public notice or public kind of request information.
I have that letter with me and Shannon with you, cause I don't know, so.
Um, so we'll, we'll work together with what they've started to do with some parcel data and start to narrow down specific areas and then we'll, I assume we'll be doing some kind of thing.
Yeah.
Asking for volunteer, basically.
And can you just briefly describe for the broader television audience, what would be entailed in hosting some equipment for either short term or long term?
So the equipment looks like a little rod, um, which is able to measure the water table depth and also salinity, if there is any saltwater intrusion coming in or identified. Also, it measures temperature. Uh, they are usually benign. Uh, we don't, we are, we do not intend to contaminate any well water and that's something that we take very, very seriously. Um, it's, it's not remotely monitored. Somebody has to come probably once in a month or so. It's not like too many visits and then just download that and the data into the computer. Uh, and every time we are downloading them, we are, you know, sanitizing them, we are, you know, cleaning them very well. Ideally, it would be nice to put them in a well that's not pumped frequently, cause that's gonna, you know, show the fluctuation in water table. And also like, you know, water table, we pump the well that's abandoned, if there are any abandoned wells that we can, you know, resuscitate, that would be ideal. Um, I do not know how much of the Leanneville Wells are being monitored. It is possible that they have loggers in there. Uh, I will have to ask some data from them, uh, from fire engineering. Uh, but it would be nicer to do such monitoring towards the western edge of the town, um, not just to look at the water table depth, but also like impact of storm, you know, whether or not these get silled or not. So uh, it will not identify pathogens, you know, uh, but, you know, we will sample them. We'll take samples to lab to do all these analysis.
Right. Um, I would say so we have some actions to figure out who we're gonna go out with, some communications to try and drum up some participation. If anyone is listening at home and is interested in um possibly engaging here, would say, send Ed, Ed Rotella, R E Land Use Clerk, um, phone call or an email, um, get on the shortlist and then that can be looked at as we start to look at the map.
Yeah, I think, I mean, our, our goal is next week, you know, if we can come up with that, over a map with parcel data and he's come sort of like tentatively come up with maybe fifty wells or seventy wells, or whatever it's possible. Um, we will, you know, we will be able to go out, meaning my students here, they're gonna be the ones who will be doing well sampling. Uh, I will be changing all of them and if homeowners would like to get trained, I'm happy to do that too. Um, and also if homeowner want me to do a quick sort of like usage test of well waters, I'm happy to do that also.
Right. So all those are regular updates, coming back to the board on progress. I know we have a bit of a timescale.
Yeah. We do, but I, I do wanna like sort of like as far as, like in the next two weeks, at least, I'll come up with, identify homeowners, do these samples, so that I can bring my students, you know, they haven't seen the area as much, so we have to give them a tour.
Sure. Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, I happen to be on public water. Uh, I would think a hindrance in getting people to volunteer would be a fear that you discover something in their well and shut it down. You know.
Which is why you're not identifying pathogens.
Then what do you do? Is, has that been a, a concern?
There always is, there always is a concern, like residents are always afraid identifying your property if there is an issue. And we've done this in town of Charlestown and we've done it in a way that none of the residents are identified in any ways, you know, like there are, we also did septic nitrate, you know, analysis, which is more so contentious than just in saltwater. Saltwater is not even seen as contaminants. People already have salty, you know, salty groundwater there. Um, but we will make sure that, you know, the property owners are not identifying in any way.
And, and I would imagine that's a potential for like an FAQ on our outbound communications that will get in front of potential concerns or.
Yes.
I, I would make the recommendation that we probably set up something on the website that has like the ability for people to like submit, you know, a request to participate, that gives an FAQ and provides people with an overview of the project, so that they can go to the town's website and see that. And to the issue of, of worrying about contaminating, you're, you're guys are not like taking out water and testing for everything under the sun and then reporting that to the Department of Health. It's not that kind of situation at all.
Right. Um, everything goes through you, right? So you, it's up to you, we wanna share the data with. Uh, but what we will do is like, we're not gonna, it's not possible to test every single contaminant that was, so we are very specific contaminants that we're gonna be testing, like phosphate, like, you know, nitrate, which is associated with TMPLs, you know, in the area also. Um, you know, pathogens, not for all these, all the wells, it's gonna be very selective to be wells that will, you know, will test patents. And still, you know, when we, when the official mentioned that there were some wells that had pathogens in the past, so if we know which wells those are, we're, you know, happy to take samples from those wells and do front analysis on them. Bill?
Is it possible for something to be put on the town website?
That's what we were just talking about. We're gonna try to take that step as well. So, to that end, can we get a copy of the presentation?
Yes, yes, I'll give you the copy of the presentation. You do have a project narrative. I will send you the letter and letter, the, the one that I drafted, which I'll send in Charlestown, was uh, it does tell, give you a brief paragraph on, you know, about the project, uh, what, what parameters we are studying, you know, it's, it's, it's too based on that stuff, but just one, so I'll share that with you.
Okay, great. Let's get done and then, and we can figure out where it's a good time to post it.
Yeah. Yeah, when we did the town of Charlestown, we did few approaches. We mailed them, C O M L, but then I also had students go, you know, talk to homeowners in person, um, various approaches.
Okay.
Um, I also have a project in town of West, so that's a different list.
Okay. We won't change.
That's, that's gonna be a different.
We'll read between the lines accordingly. Um, anything else? Well, Professor Pratnam, thank you for your time. Thank you for your team for joining us. Really appreciate it and we're looking forward to uh, to continue this stuff.
Thank you. And um, for, if you need the GIS model itself, um, we, we, we can share with this model, so they can.
We can talk about it. I'm not sure if it makes more sense for us to give you parcel data and you kind of combine that with what you have.
Well, not easy for us.
However, we, we can translate it.
But if you also wanna keep the model for yourself, you're happy to do that.
Okay.
But then we have some, yeah.
Yeah, if you, if you just email Ed and I, we'll, we'll work together to get you whatever you need.
All right. And so, thank you very much.
Thank you. Don't forget your laptop. Thank you. All right, item three B, Abigail Estates, uh, update. Uh, so this is um, major subdivision road required, rural residential development, west side of North Freight Road, North Leisure Lane, R six, ending flat two one nine, lot one four four. This is an update to the town on the status of um inspecting and issuing electrical permit for streetlights, status of energizing the streetlights and the status of an as-built plan. Mr. Akers, someone?
Sure. Um, Vice Chair, Solicitor Ramona, um, my name is, uh, thank you for having me this evening. Um, so, uh, let me start with the electrical permit aspect. All right, so I have been on the phone for a while now with the electrician. So what happened? Where are we? And also questions for the planning boards on the town. Um, so. Background, um, it would be, the electrician said that, um, it was National Grid originally that was supposed to connect the lights. So a lot of the documents that I shared with the town were the applications to National Grid. Now, obviously, National Grid is no longer part of the land, it's about the energy. Um, the electrician told me that it's supposed to go through route of energy and he can't just simply connect the streetlights. Um, that, that's why I've been told. So if there's different information, I'm trying to call different departments to figure out what the procedures are uh today, because I'm not an electrician and I, I, I do not know myself, um, what the town requires as far as connecting the lights. Um, so that, that's, that's one aspect of it. Um, I know that.
You mean as far as connecting the lights, Mr. Akers?
Uh, so they're turned on.
Okay.
Um, but.
Well, first of all, we need to have, as I, as I understand it, your electrician should have filled a permit to install the lights. That wasn't done. And once that's done, then it was like, that electrical work is inspected. Once that inspection is done, as I understand it, we then, the town will then inform Rhode Island Energy that the lights can be energized. I would imagine this is a fairly standard playbook.
Right.
Um, in terms of those sequential steps.
Okay. Um, so it is the electrician who, so the, the wires are running, holes, uh, the junction boxes are live. So it's that, just that connection in the holes that would turn the lights on. You know, that you're saying is, is the electrician for a developer to do, not, not for Rhode Island Energy to do.
Again, there was no permit to hold, right? So the work shouldn't have been done without the permit.
Correct.
So you need to have your electrician contact Tom Verada, the building official. He will walk you right through the process of how to get that permit and the inspection retroactive. We can't go to next step until those steps are done.
Uh.
Okay?
Hmm.
So I don't understand the purpose of this paperwork, but let's just move forward and get that done, okay?
Do you wanna talk about the issue of never submitting an as-built plan within thirty days?
Yes, um, I've also been on the phone between then and now with, um, everybody to see where these apples are. Uh, last week, it involved with, uh, engineers and they told me that they're well behind and there's still sixty-eight weeks of the as-built and six week, eight weeks out on the, um, the stamp survey plan. So that's what I've been told. I, I've again reiterated that to the client. Client said he was calling to get them to expedite this, to get this done. My client told me it's gonna be done.
Certainly understand you're between a rock and a hard place here, but this is longstanding and it seems way, way, way uh over time here on that. Um, I, I, obviously, this is not the first time that you've been before this board. You've been trying to push constructively um on these matters, um, and understanding your diligence with your client and all the other stakeholders and parties here. But we're at the, well, Mr. Monty, are you saying anything on behalf of your clients here before? Yes, sir.
I'm, I'm not receiving, no.
Okay, thank you. But at this point, I feel like we have to take some steps in order to up the ante, if you will, with this project and your client, because the lack of progress on closing these things out as a matter of due diligence is just ridiculous, I guess is the way to sort of put it here, quite frankly. So I'd like to understand what our mechanisms might be in order to um apply some compliance muscle to the situation. Now, Ashley, is there an opportunity to, is it issuing a notice of violation or what recourse does this board have? I believe the board has been more than patient in this situation. We have uh homeowners in Abigail Estates who um are beyond sort of their limit of patience. So I feel like we have to do something here in order to um make your client understand the importance of bringing all of this to closure and wishing for that is appropriate and expedited.
The board can go to authorize or instruct Ashley to issue a notice of violation. That would provide the developer with X number of days to come to compliance, whatever the violations are, and then after that, files will start to accrue. And then after that, fines will start to accrue. And what's the typical level of a fine? It could be up to five hundred dollars per day. I don't know if that's, that's a lot.
Yeah, I understand.
And court is not, yeah, court is not going to sustain five hundred dollar per day fine for failure to submit as-built plans or to complete the inspection of or obtain clearance in the inspection of this streetlights.
So is a notice of violation overkill in this situation?
So it's not overkill. And you can direct Ashley or suggest to her that the period of remandate be twenty or thirty days, something reasonable. I mean, you've heard from Mr. Akers, it's gonna take sixty eight, another sixty eight weeks to do the as-built plans. The town council meeting was February second, two thousand and twenty-five. Um, so I don't know what's happening at that time. And you don't either, as far as the as-built plan?
What I told you is fine.
Well, so if nothing else, it's going to help, Mr. Akers, say to his client and his engineers, this is the fines are going to be imposed. Now get it done. Anything that's happened?
No, I I agree.
Should we do a motion?
Yes.
Sir, I'd like to make a motion that the planning board instruct Ashley Sweet as interim, um, part-time planner to submit a letter of deficiency.
That's violation.
A notice of violation, um, to the developer of Abigail Estates, um, on the two issues of streetlight connection and, um, and as-built. And that, and that, let's say, forty-five days, sixty days.
Yeah, tell us.
Sixty days would be, I think something around.
I would, I would say sixty days. I think that that's more than generous.
I would argue forty-five.
Okay, I I I, in deference to the chair, I will, I will change my, I will amend my motion to say forty-five days.
I see.
Listen, you have a.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Can you read it to us?
Sure.
This, this has come up.
Come on, sorry.
This has come up. The planning board and council, I can't even tell you how many times. These people entered an agreement in good faith to build homes. They've been without trash, they've been without snow removal until February. They still have no streetlights. It's a safety issue. Like, how long do they have to wait? It shouldn't be this hard. This should be a nice time in their lives. They're building homes, they're starting new things and it's just been, it's been a nightmare for them. They shouldn't have to hire an attorney, as nice as he is. They shouldn't have to hire an attorney to get their their neighborhood completed. It's a really nice neighborhood, but they had no sidewalks, they had no paving, no lights, no plowing, no trash pickup for months and months and months. And how much longer do they need to wait?
Can you just do me a favor for the record? Just retroactively identify yourself for the audience.
Del Janik, and I don't live in the neighborhood, but I am on the town council.
Thank you. Uh, completely agree with that. Do, so my only question before we vote on this is do we have to also define a daily financial penalty as a part of this?
Please.
Okay. Um. I can do one to two hundred dollars a day reasonably. Okay, I would say two hundred dollars a day. Anybody object on that?
And 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 then I amend my motion to include, uh, the specification of a daily penalty of two hundred dollars.
Okay, so Stu has amended his original motion to include a daily penalty of two hundred dollars and via second staff, once again, any other discussion? All right, so you're all in favor? Anybody opposed? Steve? All right, passes. Mr. Akers, as you know, the town administrator has informed you, Mr. Brightsky, that you still may have to come to the town council. So just to keep an eye out on that, eye out for that as well.
You got it.
All right, thank you. All right, we're gonna move on to agenda items. Receive recommendation to town council on amendments to appendix A zoning ordinance, Article Two definitions, adding definition for construction and demolition processing facility. Article four, section thirteen, adding to the district use table, construction and demo, construction and demolition processing facility. And Article six, other district regulations, performance standards are proposed in Article six, section ten for construction and demolition process facility. This is a discussion on a vote, a recommendation to go back to the town council. So just to remind everyone, we started this discussion in our May meeting. Um, there was a lot of thoughtful dialogue around construction and debris. Um, use case, uh, we have Mr. DeMello here with us who is in discussions with the town about purchasing parcels in the industrial park. Uh, Attorney Monten, you're representing. Um, Attorney Odean?
Thank you very much. Um, so I'll just wait a moment. Okay, here's a slide deck that we submitted on Monday, um, that we'd like to to walk you through. Um, in the advance of the meeting, uh, when you got your packets as well, you all should have been given, um, state regulations on construction and demolition debris facilities. So we did submit that ahead of time, just so you would have it. Um, and and the further context for this is is Mr. DeMello is engaging good faith, uh, negotiations with the town concerning the potential purchase of a number of, uh, parcels in the planned development park. Uh, and and part of our, uh, commitment and the town's commitment is to, um, take a look at amending the zoning code in this way. So, um, I'd like to begin by just having, Ryan, could you tell the board a little bit about yourself, what your background is, what your present business is?
Uh, name is Ryan DeMello. I am RV recycling, uh, dumps rental company. Uh, use dumpsters for various different things, cleaning out your house, building a roof, repairing a kitchen type thing. Currently, it is really only three or four places statute dump those debris within a reasonable distance. Only two in the state, there's one facility, which we will get through that in this, like what I'm proposing, in one landfill in the state.
So, um, Ryan, if you go to the slide pod and I thank you for pottling for us, um, and to the extent we can go full screen, uh, I don't know, if that's possible.
That's probably out of my ability to do that. Actually, any thoughts on this?
Well, it's a PDF. It's not a power. Like, so you can't go to my presentation. Right, oh, okay. So you could say.
I'm just saying, you just. Yep, that I blew this.
You.
So.
If you, if you scroll down just a little bit though, I think you'll be able to see the top of the slide with that shot on the screen. And there you go. Now we can see the.
There, like, thank you for working that out as good as you're gonna go.
I think that's about it.
So, um, Ryan, could you explain what a C and D recycling facility is?
It's essentially a large warehouse type building that takes in construction, demolition, renovation, waste. Mostly consists of wood, cardboard, drywall.
And if these aren't recycled, what what happens to them? Okay, uh, next slide, Tom. Hi. I think we're still missing a little bit. Yeah, that's.
Can you just get this?
There.
All right, um, so here's just some data on on landfills in Rhode Island. So according to the state, um, Rhode Island Resource Recovery Corporation, which runs the central landfill, uh, which is the only active landfill in the state, it's gonna reach capacity in two thousand and forty-six. And each day it receives twenty-two hundred tons of trash. According to a twenty fifteen study, so that's pretty dated now, um, but, you know, it's illustrative. Uh, in twenty fifteen, Rhode Island was generating over two hundred thousand tons of C and D debris each year. Um, so this is a a significant problem. And, uh, by way of example, in Massachusetts, uh, I believe it's actually illegal to send C and D debris to general landfills. They they need to be processed, um, in this way. Um, next slide, Tom. Um, Ryan, could you explain, uh, how it works for us?
Debris comes in on a truck, whether it be a small truck, it's one more doing the work, or a larger roll-off, knows their size of truck. Goes over scale, gets inspected for any contaminated stuff hazardous. If anything's suspect, it's rejected. From there, it would be dumped onto the tipping floor inside of the building where another inspection occurs, where you can see it better. There will be a sealed line dumpster next to the tipping floor. Anything hazardous does come out, it will go directly into that and there'll be an operational plan in place for any kind of whatever hazards, stuff that can be in an operational plan. They'll say what to do with it, who to call, how to handle it, all of that.
Um, and let's let's talk a little bit more about that. We go to the next slide. Um, how are toxic, uh, materials or hazardous materials treated? Um, could you explain that?
Um, if the whole load's contaminated, really everything would need to go into that line dumpster. It's, you know, to be able to separate hazardous stuff from the business. Um, if it's only a small amount, it can be separated out and put into that line container. So it is totally separate and wouldn't be a hazard, um, at the moment, as long as it can properly from there. Uh, Rhode Island Department of Urban Rental Management will need to be notified when anything that comes in like that. And not a requirement by the state, but inside the building, there can be four drains installed at every garage door, manor, exiting the facility. So any leak will, does not exit.
And where would that, where would that dump to?
Uh, underground storage holding tank. That'd be possible.
Which we have to do.
So totally separate from any stormwater.
And then if we go to the the next slide, um, so this is a highly regulated activity. It's not something that someone can just build a warehouse and and start doing. You need to be granted a license by RIDEM. Um, you have to provide methods for how non-cross processable waste and hazardous waste will be treated and disposed of on to be monitored by RIDEM. You have to have plans in place for odor, dust, litter and vector control. Because vector control has to do with with insects, rodents and and the like. Uh, other provisions include erosion sediment control plan, uh, extensive stormwater management and, um, it, depending on the site, groundwater monitoring, uh, if it's deemed appropriate by RIDEM. And you'll see a little later on, we're gonna propose some additional restrictions, uh, that we think are appropriate for Tibberden. So we'll get into that. But next slide, uh, Tom. Um, also in the regs, um, seventy-five percent of all materials received need to be out of the site within six weeks. So this is not a landfill, it's a recycling facility. Um, that needs to happen on a continuous basis. And in no event are you permitted to store material for over three months whatsoever. So seventy-five percent in and out within six weeks, a hundred percent, uh, can never be there more than three months. Um, also, the, uh, operators are required to establish closure bonds, uh, to ensure that, you know, if the the business is no longer viable or the plant is gonna shut down, uh, that there's appropriate, um, financial wherewithal to make sure you close the site in an appropriate and safe manner. Um, we go to the next slide. Um, so here it's kind of small print. Um, I'll go through these, um, one by one. Um, so in addition to all of the regulations that were part of your packet, which is fourteen pages, standard RIDEM provisions, um, we think that as Tibberden is considering this use for the planned development park, um, we wanna make sure it's right for Tibberden. So we would further propose that the use be permissible only with a special use permit. So you have that level of of oversight. That, um, all processing activities take place indoors regardless of distance to residential zones. So under the state regs, uh, you could have outdoor processing, um, activities if you're far enough away from residential districts. What we're saying is, you know what, add, uh, an additional restriction, all processing indoors, no matter what. We think that's sensible. Um, groundwater testing is, um, at the discretion of RIDEM in the state regs, uh, we would propose that it be mandatory, um, so that the operator would have to submit those to to RIDEM.
And who is doing that groundwork in our system?
That the, uh, operation needs to do and submit to RIDEM as part of its, um, licensure. Yeah, so.
And how frequent is that?
Um, I have to consult the state regs, um, but basically what we would wanna do is in cases where the state says it's mandatory, this particular site needs groundwater testing, we wanna, uh, in the unlikely event that RIDEM would consider this site, you know, not necessary, that we would tell them, hey, no, we, whatever your operational plan is for sites that do groundwater testing, apply those to us because that's what Tibberden requires in its code if this is approved. So whatever RIDEM standard, uh, sample requests are, when it is mandatory, make it mandatory for for Tibberden to sign. So that's how we would, um, propose that. Additional restrictions, we would say a building footprint not to exceed forty thousand square feet. Essentially a large warehouse, um, and daily tonnage not to exceed a hundred and fifty tons. Um, we do think that it would be further appropriate to include, um, a a provision that might allow for expansion if it makes sense. So if a site were operating, say, for five years or more and is in good standing with RIDEM, you know, not in violation, um, that they could come back for, uh, an expansion of the special use permit upon showing that, um, you know, the increase in activity wouldn't be delecterious to the roadways, there being a reduction in service. I think that also, uh, makes sense. Um, uh, we further propose as part of the objective and, uh, specific criteria for special use permit that, uh, truck arrival and departure times be between seven AM and five PM and that there be a ten-foot vegetation buffer around all lot lines excepting, of course, the entryway. Um, and and so we can, uh, return to this, but I'd like to finish the presentation first, if I may. So we go to the next slide. Uh, wanna talk a little bit about why we think, uh, this is consistent with the Tibberden Comprehensive Land Use Plan. Sitting here tonight, uh, the town council has made a recommendation for, the town council has asked you to make a recommendation about whether it makes sense to have this be a permitted use in the planned development park. And part of your job is to say, well, hey, i- is that consistent with the, uh, goals of zoning and with the comp plan? So we think the comp plan, um, clearly shows consistency. Uh, ten point seven economic development, um, says that the town should plan for and support diversified commercial, industrial and mixed-use development. Should maximize the economic opportunities of the planned development park and actively pursue enterprises with the best potential for positive tax revenue, crease creation of job opportunities and sustainable environmental impact. And this certainly, uh, helps achieve, uh, that last, uh, phrase. With respect to land use, if we take a look at section five point five of of the comp plan, we see that, uh, you wanna promote land use patterns that are consistent with natural, natural resource constraints, are environmentally and economically sound and minimize incompatibility among uses. The next several slide, I'm gonna talk about compatibility of uses. Not quite there yet. Uh, and and also you see in in five point five that, um, the town should support the diversification of the tax base, increase neck, uh, tax revenue through non-residential development, including the development of the PDP. So if we go to the next slide, Todd, I'd like to, uh, talk just a little bit more about the PDP. Um, it's a hundred and seventy-two acres and it only has, as the comp plan calls them, four tenants. When the comp plan was written, there was, there was even less, but the first, um, owner of property in the PDP that's, that's not the town, uh, is the power plant. It's a two hundred and ninety megawatt combined cycle natural gas turbine. We got a photo of it here. So, uh, this is, you know, uh, an example of what we see in the park present. You know the next slide, Todd? Everyone's familiar with the Longplex Center. In effect, it's a large warehouse. Uh, next slide, Todd. Uh, we've got Bill Sales Kiln Drive Firewood Operation. Uh, couldn't get a photo of this, uh, from the street, but again, it's a large warehouse. Um, Todd, if you may. And then, uh, more recently, the self-storage, um, facility advantage self-storage, a large warehouse. Um, so we really do think that, uh, this use would, uh, if we go to the next slide, Todd. Um, be very consistent with the type of development in the plan development park. Um, and this is again, just right from the comp plan. It says that, uh, the PDP, we're talking about the future land use map, how it's, um, identified. It's intended to highlight opportunities for new commercial development. High-tech industries, office research and development, and light manufacturing. We believe that this, this, uh, constitutes light manufacturing. In order to generate jobs and diversify the local tax base, it's an undeveloped area serviced by public water sewer and has convenient highway access. So, um, for all of those reasons, what we see is being done in the plan development park. This is very consistent with the purpose of zoning because we have uses that, that are not going to be negatively affected by this use. Um, you are very near to the highway, so it makes sense to situate this, uh, at this site. Um, you'll certainly increase the commercial tax base as a result of this. Um, and, and you would help meet those aspects of the comprehensive land use plan that have to do with sustainability. Um, again, uh, the land bill, uh, services ninety-seven percent of Rhode Island and it's got a shelf life of twenty-one more years. Uh, so we think it is, uh, very important. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, um, but we would propose a, a positive recommendation to the town council, um, with language consistent with the, I think it was maybe the seventh slide, um, making a C and D facility right for Tiberton. I think maybe if we could put that one back on, uh, Todd, because that's probably what most people might be interested in discussing. Um. One more. There it is. Um, so I have, I have nothing further. Have any other questions?
Okay. Well, appreciate the time and effort that went into the presentation. I know we had talked about that. That certainly helps to, uh, provide some better insight into what the potential establishment might be. Um, I have some questions. I'll start and then sort of turn it over. Um. What, I mean, in your professional opinion, what potential contaminants could get into a dumpster, come off a dump truck or something like that?
Uh, biggest thing would be asbestos. Lead paint is actually considered not hazardous because it's paint and not wood. So that's like just solid waste, turn landfill and maraling, classify that as solid waste.
Hmm.
You never really know what a liquid is. Mostly it's usually rainwater inside of a dumpster. Okay. It's whatever, a lot of it is whatever's in your house, like me and you earlier, talking about the building. Put all of that in the dumpster, dump it in the building.
Yeah.
Sort of.
And it, it's the case too though, that if you're, um, in correct requirement, wrong rhyme, because you're close to the industry. If someone is demolishing, uh, a house that has asbestos, isn't there oversight of that, like at the scene before it even? It doesn't just go into any dump, into the garbage?
By shooting.
Right.
By shooting, yeah. It's demolition permitting you to have this.
You have to have a plan in place. So there's, if people are following law, there's an oversight at the site. And then if people haven't followed the law, RIDEM also, uh, requires oversight once it gets to the facility. So there's multiple checks for asbestos at least.
Okay. Um, so we, and certainly appreciate the content that's on this particular slide and the willingness to sort of go about that. Um, what would be a, um, likely cadence for water testing, groundwater testing? Is that monthly? Is that quarterly? What would be a standard then?
We, we would have to, um, you know, reach out to RIDEM and find out in, I think there's only one other of these facilities in Rhode Island and see how frequently they're requiring, um, testing of that facility. I don't think they put it, um, specifically in their regulations, the, the number of times per year. Uh, it just simply says in the regulations that they can require it, that require it of you if they deem it appropriate. So we just wanna kind of override that and say, no, 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 for us to have gotten licensed, it is required to, you know, how many times do you want it from us?
Sure. And give them approximately to Stafford Pond, which is our only public drinking water source.
I expect they would mandate it anyway.
Yeah, groundwater testing would be incredibly important, um, as a risk mitigation component here. Um, so in anticipation of this, um, discussion, we had asked Todd to pull together some additional standards that if the board were to make a positive recommendation back to the town council, would strengthen our position as a town to, um, drive greater enforcement of this and not solely be responsible on RIDEM. Because no matter if you are operating an above-board business, there's the variable of that's out of your control, about what people are putting in. There's the variable to the extent that RIDEM is properly doing their job. Um, so from a town perspective, we want any and all additional enforcement capabilities to make sure that we are taking steps to proactively protect ourselves, the residents, the natural resources here. I don't disagree that from an environmental pers- perspective, your argument, I get it. We're talking about reducing material going into the landfill, recycling, but that could, could be potentially offset by the, uh, environmental degradation that could come about as a result of something toxic. That's out of your control and although you have standards and processes in place, that is a valid concern that I think this board has as state citizens. So, do you wanna? Oh, a- actually, do we have? Sure, do you wanna do that for the devil?
Well, I, I just had a suggestion. I was just having a suggestion for how to move forward on this. Um, so Todd's memo has, I believe, twenty-four performance standards. A lot of those performance standards are already in state law and regulation. But there are, are a few additional ones that are legally possible for Tiberton to take. And now the applicant has come up with, uh, with a list, which is right on the screen here, of making the C and D facility right for Tiberton. And I think there are about five, um, items there. Um, and that would also involve having a special use permit. Um, maybe the best way to approach this discussion is to kind of combine both of those, both the twenty-
I have list forty.
Both, both the twenty-four and, and the ones that you have done. And then, and then I would have a couple of questions, but I would be prepared to probably accept that list. So thank you, Todd, for, for putting that together.
I do have a couple of questions. I do wanna say that this has been hugely helpful, um, and I took a look at what you sent, what you sent Todd. I, the one, or the first question I have is regarding the groundwater testing. Um, would you be open to, and I think this actually protects you guys as well for what's going on there, is doing sort of a baseline prior to the installation and then whatever RIDEM?
Certainly.
Um, then the other question I have, and this is a big deal because I have some recommendations, Todd, but are you familiar with, like PFAS or LEAD in healthcare? For, for other chemicals, popular, a lot of counseling stuff in the seventies.
Slightly, yeah.
Um, and then sort of, this is more of a recommendation for the board, kind of looking at what Mr. Man's C H, or, or, Monty, no, no, sorry. I'm sharing and have what you shared. Um.
Sure.
The one, the one thing in my sort of research is there's a constant referral to RIDEM and best practices for ensuring, um, you know, there's, there's not leaching. And so I would just ask, and I have the language I can share, that we leave specificity around that because it's not in, that's, and that specificity isn't in the RIDEM. It just refers to it, the RIDEM regulations. And this is more stuff around, um, filtration systems, sediment practices, flood management, and then getting more specific. If you have to, thinking about PFAS and some of the newer, um, chemicals that might end up in, in dumpster, um, around advanced application and electric regulation. So us being very specific around what those things are, and I will, I'll email to you so you can work that in. But I would just be very specific about that so that in these special use permits, we have some leverage to say, hey, this is the level of which, and I think, I know, I don't think some of this will apply to you, but I just leverage on what the level and specificity of filtration safety that we have. That's really.
Okay, so what I'll say to that, VA?
We have some more questions.
Let's let Todd respond. You're, you're way smarter than I am, first of all. So we're only gonna be able to do so much because these, this area has, is so heavily regulated by VEM that we, we can't supersede their regulations. So we can certainly see what you have and if we can cooperate something.
It's really just taking their quote, quote regulations that they refer out and just making that specific. Taking those, that specificity and putting it in. So it's nothing that's different from theirs, it's just making it legally clear what that is. Because I had to go down radical to find out what their best practices were. They're not blatant and they're not straightforward.
And, and I think that one's reason for that is I also think they change.
Yeah.
And so, um, I mean, I'm, I want it to be safe, right? I think everyone does, but I don't know that it's necessarily wise to give that level of specificity when it's a, a moving park. Right? It might be better five years from now, like there might be higher standards. Um, so I think it should be hard to do.
Say minimal or something like that.
We would take what she's.
You'd have to say as, as amended by D M, so that it was.
Yes, whatever D M requires, I just, I don't wanna, um, lock us into something that might be fluid and changing, that's great.
Sure.
So with that, if the town is implementing regulations, they're putting something in there that's more stringent than the state, would the state still trump the local regulations?
Yes.
So can we put in something more stringent?
Yeah.
And this isn't more stringent, it's just defining the rabbit hole that they would send you down. So we know at least a base level.
Work.
A question on one hundred and fifty tons daily, what would the number of trucks, um, be for that?
That's a good question. I actually, as, uh, Ryan was walking me through this, I asked him the same thing. So Ryan, approximately how many trucks would that be a day?
Could be anywhere from thirty to sixty. Sounds like a lot. When this first gets started, I'm willing, the, the tons limit can be lower than one fifty. But if we're building this in the maximum, I can see me envisioning that maybe twenty years from now, I'm operating a facility that's that large. Um, certainly not gonna start off with that. So to put you at ease if you're, put a smaller number there, I'm fine with that with the expectation that I can come back reapply, I think, in the grease.
So wait, so I was just gonna respond to that. If, if that's the case, then it should probably.
Has to.
Sorry. I would imagine under that kind of circumstance that we would want to put the limit in the ordinance and then specify in your special use permit if you have like a lower or if there's a tiered kind of stepped process to that because I think the board wants to understand in granting the special use permit, what they're granting it for. So if, if you had, you know, if your plan is to grow, then it, it would be wise, I think, to at least have an understanding of that as part of the special use permit. But I think putting it in the, I think in the ordinance itself, you have to just put the, the upper limit, how, what, you know, what the most could be.
Mm-hmm.
Just for the thought, you know, as, as you think about how that works.
Yeah, and right now we're proposing daily fundage not to exceed a hundred and fifty without, um, coming back for expansion of special use permit and, uh, uh, any of that practice study.
So.
Yeah.
So just to clarify, when you say that amount of trucks, it would be going into your facility and then making a return trip? So it's kind of just double the amount of traffic that's coming through there with the doubling the amount of trips?
Right.
That would go through your facility alone that.
City, city. Yeah.
And I appreciate a local business person or a person from town that wants to, you know, put in a business here, expand their business. I'm just very concerned about the location. The proximity to Stafford Pond, I mean, it's like fifteen hundred feet from there. It's a primary drinking water source and even if we have certain testing, it, it can be after the fact. By the time we determine that there's any contamination, I'm just worried about the potential damage that's done. And the other thing, uh, I'm concerned, you know, you mentioned compatibility, um, with uses. Longplex, um, is expanding and a lot of their activities appear to us children. They're running out right now for summer camps. So there's a lot of kids going in and out of there and I'm concerned with the safety, even if we put in speed bumps, even if we put in a speed limit. Um, just the number of children that are gonna be in that area and running around, getting to camp, getting out of there, or any sporting events. With their expansion, um, potentially across the street or, um, with the car museum, you're gonna have more traffic in and out of there. And I'm concerned about safety. I just don't feel that this is the right location for that type of business. Like it's too close to Stafford Pond and it's just, um, not compatible with Longplex. And I, I just don't want to endanger any children in that area.
The, uh, do you grind all the material up?
Uh, but for, on a large-scale processing facility, yes, before, when you're opening line, you would grind. Um, at first, small scale, you know. Maybe clean wood at the end of it to sell as mulch.
Yeah, I'm not, I don't understand how you detect the asbestos. I mean, like I watched them, people clearing out in the state. I mean, they threw everything in those twenty, twenty-yard dumpsters. You know, nobody was paying any attention to whatever liquid, whatever, they was eating it in there. Yeah, how you gotta fill, uh, filter that out? I know the, the, uh, MRF, when those fluids come in, they dump them on the floor and if it's contaminated, they kick it off to the land.
So there's a visual detection on the floor?
Yeah, and so even though it's against regulations, when we put something in this, uh, it doesn't seem to be much of a hindrance. I would think a professional places tear down the house to rebuild or something, be a little more careful. But at Bliss of Fort Horns, the underground leak from the gas tank, from, from the gas station, made it all the way to Camden before it was ever detected. That, that's, uh, can be a pretty serious thing. So, uh, I'm also a little concerned about possible contamination. I'm also a little concerned about possible contamination due to the location.
Give us a question. You said that you're willing to do all the processing inside, right?
That's correct.
And that, that there would be a drain in the floor for any liquid that would go into a holding tank and then gets pumped. And I guess I'm asking the question about contamination of Stafford Pond. How, how does that happen when, like, when the stuff is leaving the site? Is, how is it leaving the site? Are all of the containers lined so that like the truck that's leaving the site isn't dripping liquid in the street that then gets washed into Stafford? I'm just thinking, how does that happen? Or, or, I mean, it's happening inside, it's, there's a drain in the floor to catch, I mean, like liquid. So I'm, I'm looking for, to understand the contamination issue, how does that happen?
So, so I can speak, but I'm, I'm not obviously an expert in handling, uh, hazardous materials.
Sure.
Nor is Mr. Demello, but I think that, um, the hard part is, you know, we're looking at this and, and there is a comprehensive set of regulations that the hazardous materials need to leave the site safely. And that's monitored by, by RIDEM, um, I don't have the information as to how exactly the science of it works tonight.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think what you're hearing is that there's a concern, and I think we all recognize the fact that despite RIDEM's best efforts, they're understaffed. And they're not out watching trucks leave these sites on a regular basis, and so, I'm just trying to understand from that perspective, where does, how could the contamination happen? What does that look like? And is there some mechanism that the town can put in place to prevent that? So that we can come to an agreement that you can do this safely and that the town's concerns are then, you know, mediated.
I, I have an idea of that because.
So, actually it was something that you guys said, so if the protocol is to contact RIDEM as soon as a hazardous material is identified, I think we should have as part of our standards that the town is also contacted.
Sure.
You know what I mean? Which then raises the alert, puts, can trigger some series of events to get out, evaluate,
or at least be able to coordinate with RIDEM and know that they're responding.
Exactly, or, or push the issue more emphatically with RIDEM so that we see action. Um, the other, the other suggestion that I would make for our, um, standards is that we add mandatory groundwater testing on irregular cadence, which is why I asked the question, is there a standard for that? Is it monthly, is it quarterly? I don't know if we know that answer, but some irregular proactive water testing would also go a long way to make sure that we get out ahead of potential issues if and when they were to happen. Sorry.
I, as you know, I've, I've been involved with industrial park, professional park, with the Stone Webster, building a power plant. If the worries should be looked at, I mean, Ashley just brought up a point about, um, waste traveling. The boards, there's a lot of waste in that park, and it runs right off the rocks. I mean, how long does it take to get down there? Cleaned August yesterday in the ricks, but, um, you know, it's critical, I mean, as far as the town's.
Are you only accepting debris from commercial entities or also from homeowners?
Homeowners, well.
My, my thought was, i- if there's a way to eliminate just commercial, and I don't know that there is, then you increase the likelihood that there's no hazardous material. Because hazardous material is not C and D by definition.
Any other members?
Um, ju- just a question to Mr. Demello. Um, I think you mentioned a hundred and fifty tons per day, and you said that would be anywhere between thirty and sixty trucks. Um, and that would be like, that would include Saturday probably, but not Sunday, six days a week or five days a week?
Uh, usually most of the road is half day on Saturdays.
Uh-huh. So, so, um, just to get to the comment that Cheryl made about the, the issue of safety, um, and that's a big concern of mine, in fact, that's the major concern I have. It is the amount of truck traffic in an area that's gonna have a lot of pedestrians, including kids. Um, could you cut that back to say a hundred from a hundred and fifty? Um, thereby cutting back on the amount of truck traffic? And Cheryl did make the point that it's not just one way, and once the trucks come in, they have to go out again. So we're talking about a lot of traffic here. Um, and, 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 you know, set, set a performance standard on no more than say a hundred tons per day. Um, and see how that goes, and, and if that goes well, um, it could always be increased.
Yeah.
At a later point, but, um.
I think I already mentioned I'd be willing to do that.
Okay, so, so in.
What's your, what's your bare minimum?
So, so now we have a. Do you have a? We have a growing list of performance standards here that, um.
No, and I, I think another important part of this too is that by having a D by special use permit, like, we're at a very sort of, the early stage in the process. Um, and when, if Mr. Mal buys the property, right, he hasn't purchased it yet, contract's not even signed yet. Um, and we come back and we go, okay, we wanna do a C and D facility on this site as part of the special use permit, we'll have to present to you the actual plan for how hazardous, like what is our operational plan that RIDEM is going to review? And because it's a special use permit, at that time, you'd also be able to attach further conditions and restrictions. Um, so I think that's important as well.
Sure.
That this is just, we wanna say, allow it in this zone with these high level restrictions, with knowing that you're gonna be able to take a very deep operational dive if it gets to that point. And you can attach further restrictions then as well. Two steps.
Two steps. But it doesn't violate whatever D E M that's already governing.
I think, I think you can attach restrictions that go beyond D E M.
Okay.
I think you can, as long as they're not in conflict with D E M's restrictions.
I think, I think you can attach them even if they are in conflict with it. Um, that's my opinion, so I guess.
So I want, I wanna just say one thing about the traffic. I don't wanna minimize the concern, because I, I think it's a concern. But I also think it can be mitigated, and I think we, it would not be wise to start to rule out businesses because of traffic, because we already have Longplex and they're going to expand. I think we have to work with applicants that are gonna come in to the business park that are going to have traffic, and we also have to work with Longplex to make sure that he is providing safe pedestrian access between his buildings. We can't put that on other applicants entirely and say that we can't let you do things in here because you have too many trucks. I think we have to mitigate those concerns, and again, I'm not minimizing the issue. I just think we, we can find ways to work through that between working with this applicant and with Longplex and any other applicant that comes in, making pedestrian safety a priority.
And, and just to add to what Ashley said, and I completely agree with that, um, would it be possible to look at parcels of land in the, in the park that, uh, that would stay away from Longplex? Um, would that be possible?
I think that's all under contracts.
I don't know that you can, because I think the parcels that Longplex is looking at, you have, you have to, everybody has to drive by them to get out.
Yeah, so, yeah, so.
Yeah.
That was just a thought, because then a lot of that safety would go away, if you get trucks in and out.
We're, we're at the mercy of, you know, what the town will sell the district on.
You're also talking about a use, excuse me, talking about a use, right? Not a particular project.
Yes.
And, and if we come before you, you know, a couple of years from now, with a special use permit request, if this goes through, we'll have to, you know, we'll present evidence with, with experts about the operational plan. And if this board finds that it can't be safely done based on that evidence, or we can't produce that evidence, then you would deny the special use permit.
That's a good reminder for everyone, is that you're not here approving a project, you're just approving or sending a recommendation to the town council on adjusting the zoning language that would potentially allow a project.
Okay, so there's still substantial risk that it doesn't work.
Sure.
Prologinary, prologneria do you need?
So what, we're proposing, uh, a maximum square footage of forty thousand square feet for the building, but I expect at the beginning it would be closer to twenty thousand square feet, is that right? Yes, so twenty thousand square feet is what we would initially expect for a building footprint of a warehouse.
Probably the same size as what would be next door at Bill's house.
Yeah, I think Bill's house has a twenty thousand square feet, yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah, so that actually helps, so you're saying regardless, I think you, this is where your, your.
Seven oh five from seven to ten, I believe?
Yeah, so if they're down here, frankly, I mean, I'm at Longplex multiple times a week, I don't usually take progress way, most people come in through this way, so. I think there's, there'll probably be more roads and things, there's a way to separate the kids from, because most people don't take this, that was my question.
But I think that the eventual development of other parcels with Longplex, you will have to drive by them to get to this eventually. I mean, and that's gonna be the case for almost everything in this park.
But it might be mitigated by new roads and traffic. The, um, going back to the, this con- contamination discussion, just because I went down rabbit hole. In reality, you're gonna have drums underneath this building that capture anything that's floating around in the air or that's leaking through. And so when we think about what is the potential for contamination, the reality is, is there is potential for contamination when these trucks come in, but we get that off of route twenty-four regardless. So that's why having the baseline to understand what's coming off the highway, because these trucks are chock full of contamination, are driving back and forth every day. Um, it really comes down to if, you know, and these are gonna be RIDEM compliant and I'm assuming, you know, top of the line. It's, if there's a leak in one of those drums, so that's more ten, fifteen years down the road after installations, this is something to think about. You are gonna, these particles are gonna hit the air, like that just is what it is, so monitoring the water, the groundwater will help us to understand the actual impact. But the reality is, is all this stuff is floating around and we are being impacted, impacted by it, but we just wanna minimize it. So that's, those are kind of the two main.
Yeah, and I would, I would further say, you know, if you wanna put in the zoning code, you know, a further requirement that at the special use permit stage, you present an emergency mitigation plan, how can you do it? I think, I think it makes sense.
So, um, we wanna move this along, do you wanna be respectful, and if anyone wants to provide public comment here, this is not a public hearing, but three minutes. Just, I can remind yourself again, whatever.
Yeah, okay, my name is Karen, I'm from, I live in seventy-four North Christopher Avenue. I'm still post, I'm still a post-proposed zoning ordinance change to allow reconstruction and demolition processing facilities. The reason we are here tonight is because of Mr. Demello's interest, but changing the zoning ordinance would allow any interested party to be able to set up operations in town, not just Mr. Demello. Regardless of any shiny business plan presented and good faith, the best of intentions, there is inherent risk with set operations, especially given in this instance that Mr. Demello is interested in land in the business park, which is in and around a watershed, as you all know. Stafford Pond, as you all know also, is the sole drinking water source for some of the residents. It's already been compromised several times over the past several years. And I think that allowing this change would, and continue an increased risk to Stafford Pond. My prior letter to the planning board on this matter dated April twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-five, contained enclures of information from actual operating businesses that clearly state there are hazards such as asbestos that can be received in such business operations. P F A S are also another item of great concern. The risk is far too great to have a potential for contamination. Even with the best of business operations and practices, this was never the intended use of the business park as stated in the town's comprehensive community plan. Having loud trucks will negatively impact the quality of life in the surrounding area. We don't know the specific, the specific details of the exact types of trucks and their noise levels, which is a great concern. Members of the community should not have to worry about losing their hearing because of the noise levels. For instance, using a simple noise model such as the distance at to entry calculator indicates that a separation distance of sixteen hundred feet would be needed for, uh, eighty-five decibel level noise from an idling truck to bring it down to the acceptable residential property level of fifty-five decibel levels. Greater distance will most likely be needed due to multiple trucks operating on site. This is just one out of a number of crucial factors that I feel are not highlighted enough in the decision-making process because the focus is so narrowly focused on tax revenue. Thank you very much.
Any other members of the public? Anyone? All right.
All right, guys, I'd like to, uh, move this along and sort of call the question on this.
And again, this is the potential to make a recommendation to the town council to add this as a use in the use table with, um, an initial set of performance standards, which would further then be evaluated if and when this project ever manifested and moves forward. Um, and would go through our standard process, um, and be evaluated with greater criticality. I like the idea of a special use permit, which allows us even greater, um, sensibility here.
And I'll just remind you that you have a memo from the May meeting that gave you an advisory, a draft advisory that you can work from, and we can supplement that with tonight's discussion, de- you know, depending on which way you go, also with the proposed ordinance, if you pass that forward. Uh, sure, so there's a, you have your memo, um, from last month's meeting that just walks you through the consistency with the general purposes of zoning, um, it tell, it speaks to the requirements that you have to find on, and it gives you some sections of the, um, comprehensive plan, um, that are identified as supporting business in the, in the park. And all of that comes with a caveat that you would, if you move this forward with a positive recommendation, that it would be a positive recommendation also based on your drafted zoning requirements, that it, it would be consistent as long as those were the, the zoning requirements.
Okay, so my, so we have a, we have a list here of items, and I think we may have a consensus on this. We, we have Todd's original list of.
Mr. Monti has not seen it.
Okay, well.
If it, if it's what is in the state law, then it works.
Well, there, there, there are a few, there, there are a few. I think four or five items that are, um, that are not inconsistent with state law, but are, um, so we, we have that list, we, we have the, uh, we have the, the list, which was, um, entitled, um, making a facility right for Tiberian, and that included the special use permit requirement. And then Bill made two suggestions, um, he, he talked about town notification as well as state notification when a problem occurs, and A and B mandatory groundwater testing. Um, if we put all of those things together, we might have a consensus to move forward with a positive recommendation to town council on, on this zoning change. Um, but here's my process question, can we do that? And Ashley has also reminded us that we have a memo from our May meeting that makes positive findings a fact. So we could, we could actually have a motion tonight. Would you like to do that, Mr. Chairman?
Well, Vice Chairman, um, I'd like, I'd like Todd to do it.
Not for long.
Sorry.
Um, can we just actually have Todd quickly run through the list for folks in the audience and I will just. I agree with you. Can we just do this?
Hmm?
Sure. I'll do that. The A O tell me whether you want something more specific.
Uh, well, like, to to be clear that this exists um in a couple of different places where we could potentially turn to it. I just want to find the most comprehensive one to actually point that we can say it just, it wasn't, it wasn't any of mine. So I do have like these lists of things that you would consider. I just need to s- to pull the sources because I would kind of do it.
I'm I'm wondering if instead of actually listing out exactly what it says, if instead we can't make reference to whatever the sources that contains the information so that every time it is amended, it's still the most recent? So that like you don't have to.
Days, yeah, that's the thing is that I want to find the one that's the most comprehensive of the three cases that I. And I did this kind of, well, I was doing that thing, so I just. But we can just, that's gonna be like a footnote under the water. It will be a little water contamination section or filtration section.
Will it work?
So when we get there, tell me.
I, because I don't know.
Yeah.
Well, I don't a hundred percent understand exactly what you have, and so I just want to make sure that we're we're referencing it correctly. Is it, are, is it coming from D E M standards?
Well, it does, the thing is, is D E M refers to other places.
Okay.
And so it has like.
I got it. So will it work that in these sections where you went and looking for more specific information that we can footnote that with a source?
That's, and that's the thing is, because I was coming in case I was on sources and I have to go back into some of the fifty tabs of them that I have to read the source.
Okay, when we get to the first one, you tell me, and we'll see what we can work out.
Sure.
Okay?
But I'm just thinking, instead of actually listing what the document says, we just sort of reference it.
I understand that. Let's see what, what. Let's see what's.
Let's hear it separately.
Right.
Allow as a special use permit not as permitted by right performance standards. I added that one, Michael. I'm sorry, that is number one. Okay?
Excellent.
Um, a copy of the license to operate as well as an renewed license shall be submitted to the building official within thirty days or received from the licensing authorities or authority. Any construction, demolition, debris processing facility that is within a one thousand foot radius of residential zone shall conduct all operations covered. Yeah, under the license inside confines of an enclosed permanent building. Shall submit with its application a copy of the radius plan, which gives the requirements of the regulation and submitted as part of the application to the Department of Environmental Management. Shall submit with its application a copy of the site plan, which gives the requirements of the regulation and submitted as part of the application to D E, to D E M, excuse me. Shall submit with its application a copy of the construction certification report, which gives the requirements of the regulation and is submitted to the D D E M. Shall submit with its application a copy of the operating plan, which gives the requirements of the regulation and submitted as a part of the application, the renewal application to D E M and required by the D E M with type of changes in additions to the facilities operation and equipment subsequent to the approval of the operating plan. Shall submit with its application a copy of the fire protection and contingency plan, which gives the requirements of the regulation and submitted as a part of the application to D E M. Shall submit with its application a copy of the closure plan. And I have a specific definition, uh, but anyways, which gives the requirements of the regulation and submitted as part of its application to D E M. This one is not from the regulations, but shall submit with its application a traffic study finding that the level of service on Progress Way shall not decrease in recommending methods and means to increase vehicle pedestrian safety on Progress Way. For example, by installing stop signs, decreasing the speed limit and or installing speed, speed lines.
Good?
Yes.
Would we say Progress Way and or other? Uh, where is it? In the, in business park?
Yeah.
Isn't that? Isn't that on the road?
Nusher Lane and Progress Way.
Okay. What, what, tell me what you want as a door to one. Dust relief. And Progress Way?
Yes.
Yeah.
Those are the two main arteries, so we need to cover both of them.
Storage of unprocessed and or processed construction and demolition debris stockpiles is limited in size to the financial assurance to be posed for closure costs as required by the regulation. The facility must be able to demonstrate through records maintained at the facility and provided to the town upon request that seventy-five percent of all material received by the facility is removed from the site within six weeks and received on a continuous basis, and in no case shall the facility store material on site for over three months. That's per the regulation. Storage of construction and demolition debris must be in approved and designated areas, and stockpiles must not exceed twenty feet in height and fifty feet in width for both interior and exterior storage. A minimum separation of fifty feet must be maintained between stockpiles. For exterior storage, a minimum separation of fifty feet must be maintained between stockpiles and buildings and or structures. In addition, any construction and demolition facility within a one thousand foot radius of a residential zone district is prohibited from storing unprocessed material exterior to the facility building. Unprocessed and indoor processed construction and demolition debris must not be compacted on the ground, surface or covered with soil or other materials. And processing of materials utilized in compaction and equipment may be allowed only with prior D E M approval. All three of those are from the regulations. All water used in processing the C and D and thinning of the facility as well as any H eight from any refuse collected in storage or transfer areas that shall be disposed of in a manner that will not pollute any source of private public water supply or any of the waters or groundwaterers in the town, particularly or neighboring neighboring communities, shall be disposed of in accordance with all state and federal regulations.
That's the area and the manner is what I would want to add a specificity on, and that I'm gonna give you a concise.
Shall be disposed of in a manner?
Yeah, so the manner, if you look in, if you look in the um R I C R one forty oh five, they just keep referring to the manner. They don't tell you what those manners are, like, or even give you, so that's where I did some digging. Um, and so I want to give like a statement and a directive to where you invite these. Because they are minimal and then there's maximum. And I just want us to be clear on what those mean, because what if we want, they were doing taxes, like it's, you know, these are providing more context. It could be an I E such as if that's enough. Or it could be a directive towards, as I'm trying to put it. Where I pulled that.
But can we do that tonight, O V A?
Do we have to do this?
I'm not sure. We, we do.
Okay, keep doing that. Let me get the.
Our forty-five days is up tomorrow.
Okay, okay, so you keep doing it. I'm gonna come back to, I'm gonna work on it right now. Keep going. That's where we need to go.
Okay. So who do you stand for?
I'm gonna give you a sentence. That's what I'm gonna do.
If the D E M requires groundwater monitoring, we're gonna change this ground. And I'll need help, but groundwater monitoring wells. Copies of hydraulic reports required by the D E M shall be submitted to the T B A planning office within twenty days.
How often do you want groundwater monitoring wells?
Is there a standard?
For, they do it four times a year. Our engineering does it four times a year for the uh, for the landfill.
Okay, then let's keep that standard, or keep it consistent with that standard.
Are those public reports that come out of the landfill?
No.
No, we don't.
I don't think so.
Really?
Because we were, we
Surprise.
We were, we were, well, the town administrator, I tried to get those for uh, for Sony and the town administrator said that um it would have to be cleared with the uh, with Rick Rogers.
Okay, I'm not sure.
That that information was not public first, for Sony to get, that that Rick Rogers would have to make a determination on that.
Obviously, that's a secondary. We should go with the same standard.
Michael, does that make sense?
Oh, yes, I think, I think since SARS, they're my friend.
No.
And I I thank you all for the time you're spending on this.
Do we need to identify some areas to, to ground, groundwater wells? It's just on site. Do we have to identify on the wells?
So so maybe that could be, you know, in consultation with the town engineers directives, like as we're putting it together.
What if that, I think that should be situational. Maybe that's something that is part of the special use permit. You have a groundwater monitoring program that you present. You show us where you're monitoring. We run that through the engineer and they say, yeah, that's a good idea, or no, you should be testing here or there. I don't want to be so prescriptive in the ordinance. I think it should be situational depending on the facility.
I think I I think cause, I mean, the word. What I'm posing for war to consider, groundwater monitoring wells and copies of hydro, hydrological reports shall be submitted to the T B A planning office every four months. In addition, baseline report shall be submitted with the landed element and or special use permit application. Number and location of groundwater wells shall be determined by an expert test.
I think that should be every three months, I think, four times a year.
Four times a year. Okay? Buffer zones are equally protective alternative measures approved by the D E M to address dust, odors, litter, and or other concern or condition identified by D E M shall be regularly maintained. Buffer zone must be an area of undeveloped vegetated land retained in its natural undisturbed condition or created to resemble a naturally occurring vegetated area or approved equal. That is not used for any facility operations. Buffer zone may be utilized for vegetative drainage controls such as swells or storage ponds. But you also proposed a minimum ten foot buffer on all property lines. Yeah, vegetation buffer on all lot lines, excepting entrances. Egress, egress, egress.
Hello?
Did I have a question?
Yep.
Where does all this waste come from?
It comes from uh demolition projects.
Right, but where and just there where I want messages?
I imagine it would come from around Massachusetts, given the site's proximity to Massachusetts. So I've had, at a minimum, the facility shall have a ten foot vegetated buffer along all property lines. Is that what you proposed? Uh, excepting ingress and egress areas. I just, because I think that has come up before for my.
Should be never moved.
Okay. There shall be within one, within one thousand feet of the facility and stored stockpiles either inadequate supply of water under pressure or the equivalent of cover material for use exclusively in fighting fires or other equivalent method that needs the approval of the, that should be R I D. Any local fire chief or his designated cover material for the purposes of extinguishing a fire shall be required in the event that the construction and demolition debris is seen as stored outside or of the confines of protected structure. No screenings needing that material, and this screening is a defined term in the regulations, so I I reiterate that definition here. So no screenings needing that material that is separated out of the construction and demolition debris waste stream by passage through or retention on a screen shall be utilized within two hundred feet of any body of surface water or freshwater wetland or within five hundred feet of any body of surface water or freshwater wetland within the watershed of a public drinking water supply without specific approval of the departments. As used here, utilized shall also mean short term and temporary storage of screenings. No screenings needing that material that is separated out of the construction and demolition debris waste stream by passage through or retention on a screen shall be utilized within two hundred feet of any private drinking water supply well or within five hundred feet of any public drinking water supply well. Again, as you, as used here, utilized shall also mean short term and temporary storage of screenings. Access to the facility shall be limited to the hours in which authorized operating personnel are on duty at the facility. Additional time shall be designated before and after normal operating hours to allow for housekeeping chores such such as windblown refuse control at all facilities, et cetera. There shall be no access to the facility for the acceptance of construction and demolition debris during the additional time permitted for housekeeping chores. You could also propose the additional condition of certain hours for truck.
Seven A.
I think seven to five.
Seven to five.
Seven to five for truck traffic. So let's add that in.
Monday through Friday. What about Saturday night?
Seven eleven there.
There shall be no deliveries on Sundays. What about holidays?
No deliveries.
Does that require us to then define the holidays that are.
Just say federal holidays. That that list changes.
State.
Okay?
Yeah, we're legal bank.
Yes. There shall be gates at all entrances to the facility which shall prevent access to the facility except during the hours in which authorized operating personnel are on duty at the facility, but not including during the additional time allotted for housekeeping chores. These gates shall be locked when the site is unsupervised. Fences shall be required around the facility to limit unauthorized access. The facility shall not operate unless an onsite vector population is minimized by periodic application of cover material and by other appropriate techniques that would protect public health. Here, vector means a carrier, usually an insect or rodent that is capable of transmitting a pathogen from one organism to another. I didn't know what vector meant, so I figured I better define it here. And that's how the regulations define it. Conditions, conditions shall be maintained that are sanitary and therefore unfavorable to the harbor, feeding, or breeding of vectors. Control of insects and rodents where needed shall be affected by means of a program directed by professional exterminator utilizing insecticides and or rodent sites or other means approved by the D E M. There shall be there shall be erected at the entrance of the facility a sign clearly legible, invisible, which shall contain the following, name, facility and operator, emergency phone number, restricted materials and operating operating hours. Do you want anything else on that side?
Um. What else would we put on there? I mean, the intent is if someone passing by or customers, someone have recourse in the situation that there is an emergency. I mean, do you have, in your professional opinion, would there be other things?
That's about what's out there.
No, is the answer.
Do you want line one one if there's a?
That's what I'm thinking about. Town contact is.
Except those.
The operator must take suitable measures at all times to control dust in the facility, access to roads to the facility and all other areas relating to the facility's operation. This may be accomplished by spraying small amounts of water over the dust reduced area and or the application of suitable chemicals or paving materials on excess roads. Measures must be taken to eliminate the scatter of refuse, the operator shall provide for routine maintenance and general cleanliness of all areas related to the facility's operation, excuse me. Uh Mr. Camello had also proposed building footprint that's not to exceed forty thousand square feet. In the first five years of operation, daily tonnage shall exceed one hundred and fifty tons.
Right, I'd write that at one hundred.
After five years, the volume of tonnage may exceed one hundred tons if approved by the D E M and a special use permit granted by the town directed to allow the expansion, which shall require at a minimum proof that there would be no negative traffic impact due to the increase of tonnage that can be received.
Todd, if if I may, uh at least in our proposal, we had included the potentiality for increased tonnage and increased square footage, however unlikely that may be above the forty thousand square.
Correct.
Do we have a limit?
That probably would be.
I just wanna know that a lot of new actions we're not thinking about.
You don't have a limit unless you add the limit. And if you add the limit in the zoning ordinance and not in the use table itself, then they can request dimensional relief from that. So there would be a mechanism to get above forty, but they'd have to come in and request dimension. Need standards for that.
You can specify.
You can, yeah.
I I would I would propose that after five years of the forty thousand square foot may be exceeded, I mean, the hundred tons may be exceeded if with those same items, all eight years of work.
Expansion over forty thousand square feet um shall be by dimensional variance.
After.
I suppose you could couple that with the special use permit too, like you wouldn't have to do it by dimensional variance, you could do it by special use permit, right?
Which is.
Right.
Like in, well, the special use permit, I feel like that gives you a little bit more, although I I don't know what they've done with special use permits at the state level, if you if you had the criteria, which right now the criteria is that there would be no negative traffic impact, if you had other criteria, then you would have specific and objective criteria to like a special use permit that would allow the expansion above or beyond that. To do it by dimensional variance, you're you're have you're stuck with the dimensional variance standards, which have been, they've been watered down significantly.
Which isn't very high.
I mean, I I don't love either mechanism, I have to say, just because of what they've done with the state law.
Uh I think our preference would be that after five years, we could request an expansion of the special use permit for both tonnage and or square footage, because the two are linked i- in some respects.
Square footage.
Um but I don't think it makes sense to do it as a dimensional variance because it would be uh almost impossible to show that we didn't create the hardship, I I just, I I think it makes more sense to do it as or as an expanded special use permit.
Did you?
I don't disagree, yeah, I don't.
Okay.
Because we'd go with the property now with the.
Yeah, every, those always run with the property, right?
Yeah. Just so others understand.
So I would do after five years, the volume of tonnage may exceed one hundred tons and or uh the square footage may be expanded if.
And I think the tricky part of that, I don't disagree with the mechanism, but the tricky part of that is what are your specific and objective criteria for issuing that expansion special use permit, right now you have negative, no negative traffic impact. I think something else you wanna consider is like there's no like violations through D E M or there.
Do we have to define all of that tonight?
Yeah.
We can include violations.
Yeah, we do, because this has to go to the council.
Okay. Right. Yep.
No pending or issued violations.
I would say. From Ryden or.
Or the town. Then that with the town, that covers things like if people make a noise complaint or something like that.
Was it issued one?
Issued one.
Yeah, first kind. Issued might be within the last year, like, because maybe we resolved, um they were issued, right?
So to me, the word.
Well, I think either would be no pending or having been issued within the past twelve months, I think would be.
One. I mean, layman's terms, to me, pending means it's like an it's like an outstanding violation, it's never been resolved.
Yeah. Right, issued one has been resolved.
Yeah, it's on your record. Hey, that's up to you guys, it's a policy matter, I mean, if they've been issued a violation and it's been resolved, then you do you feel comfortable letting them expand?
Yeah.
I mean, it's it's really hard, this is all so subjective, that you have to basically predict the future to write this, but that's that's the way the law is now.
Um I would say, I would say a review of issued violations from Ryden or the town along with no pending issues, right, so that gives us the flexibility to do a historical retrospective of any issue
To look at what the violation was.
and resolve, plus anything that's pending and open.
I think that's probably the way to do it. She looks like you don't like that.
It's subjective, what does it mean? So, that's fine.
Identify the problem, which is my.
Just. Yes, right?
Yes.
Okay, let's keep going.
Oh, wait, what you're doing. I think it's the anxiety.
Oh. Hold on, let's just get through the rival departure tax we have, right?
I have a question, and maybe I missed it, but are we requiring underground storage with the drain in the floor? Are you leaving that to others? Okay, sorry.
Yeah. It's a foot buffer over here. The board this evening discussed.
Floor drains, floor drains connected to tanks and drums, shell gates to all the engine entries, which is right.
I just didn't know if you want to make that a standard requirement, requirement.
All C and D facilities have that.
Right, I don't know that, I don't.
But isn't that by including it in this document?
Yes, I mean, that's what I'm asking, is that, I didn't, I didn't hear us discussing that yet, so I wasn't sure if it had been included.
I mean, we would, we would propose also that those uh ones can be included in this proposed ordinance.
An emergency mitigation plan shall be submitted with the application.
Is it emergency or hazardous or hazard mitigation plan, is that, does this need to be different?
Hazardous materials.
Emergency and or hazardous.
Hazardous material, well, I think we want to be.
Well, hold on, there's an operational plan, right? Or no, doesn't. I think a hazardous, a hazardous material mitigation plan.
That's, it should be an O and M. But shouldn't it be an O and M plan, like it should be an operations and maintenance plan that includes how hazardous base is handled.
So. So I think it, we, we're gonna have to do that for Ryden, but if for whatever reason that's not part of Ryden's requirement,
Yes.
we'll also submit a hazardous material mitigation plan separately.
But I think we want.
Why don't we say an operations and management plan inclusive of a hazardous materials mitigation?
Of, yes. I agree. Because I think we want, we want a plan on record that that demonstrates how the facility is going to operate and meet all of these standards. And that would be an operation and maintenance plan that you include how hazardous materials are handled.
Operating. This plan shall put uh a hazardous materials mitigation plan. Or or say the operating plan shall include. Yes?
Um I am going to, from my recommendation, because as an occupational hazard of on day job, I have identified gaps. Um because I did get this information from, yes, two sections of D E M and one of the E P A. And so it's not an easy, so I'll just keep it here and take it as the state federal regulations is up for.
Okay, fantastic.
So the only thing, could we also include that the town is also notified along with Ryden in any situation where hazardous material is identified and handled?
When it's handled? Identifying, I'm sorry. Right, so anytime there's hazardous materials, you have to inform Ryden, so we'll also. Yeah, when you're looking at something coming in on the scales or god forbid you dump it on the floor and it's there. Are identified as a uh as a. Oh, what if we do anytime that Ryden has to be notified that hazardous materials that. The town is. The town also be notified, been done previously. I'll copy that. Do that at the end.
The application. Is that what we're saying? Town shall be contemporarily instantly notified each time Ryden is notified that hazardous material.
Or gives.
Any other special use criteria? I'll fix the numbers later, yeah. I'm. Good name.
Yeah.
You're doing an amazing job.
Thanks.
My friend Jan is.
No pressure.
Any other conditions from you? Rosemary, you've been too quiet. Cheryl? Danny? V A U B? Stu? Ashley?
Okay, Mr. Chairman.
So, so we need a motion
Yes.
to submit the uh Article six, section ten, performance standards for construction and demolition processing facility, however.
Special use criteria.
Special use criteria, because now everything comes into the special use permit, and that special use permit would only uh applying to the to the planning development part.
That's the only place the use is proposed.
Right, exactly, so that, um and that list is now twenty some, twenty nine items. And also, the motion should have a reference to the positive findings of fact that Ashley made in her May fifth memo. Was it May five? I think it was.
It was, well, I will update that based on tonight's conversation and make a direct reference to the document that we worked on.
Right. Exactly, so, um do we need anything more than that? I don't think so.
No.
Because we we're we're giving town council the language of verbatim, and then we're giving them the justification for doing it.
Yep.
Through Ashley's memo.
So.
So I would shoot that motion.
Do we have a second?
Okay.
We have a motion and a second, is there any final discussion?
Stu, can you repeat, can you repeat? So this this would be uh uh this would be a motion to recommend to town council the approval um of a an additional, a special use permit addition to Article six, section ten, for performance standards for construction and demolition processing facility, all twenty nine items that we have discussed tonight. And that motion would also include the positive findings of fact that that Ashley put together in a memo to the planning board of May five, May, May second, twenty twenty five.
And Stu, would, could we also add to your motion uh the adding of the definition in Article two for construction and demolition processing facility as well as adding to the district use table in Article four, section thirteen, construction and demolition.
Yes, thank you for picking that up.
Okay, just wanna make sure we hit all the sections here, okay?
Exactly, so all of those items.
Dave, would you, as amended, you second that?
Okay. We have a motion and a second, any other final, final uh conversation here? All right, all those in favor? All those opposed? We have Cheryl and Rosemary, any extensions?
Jan is.
Jan, are you voting in favor or opposed? Opposed, so we have four to threes, so the motion passes. Okay, um I just wanna thank everyone for that extremely thoughtful and collaborative discussion. Thank you, Mr. Camello, Mr. Camonte, for seeing that through and being willing to participate in that, it's appreciated. Again, this is a recommendation going to the town council, this is not anything having to do with a specific application. If and when this application comes back or any other application, um we will have uh all due course to dig in deeper on this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, uh we are at nine twenty one and we still have quite a few things to get through, so um item three D was a recommendation to the Tiberian Town Charter Review Commission, I'm sorry, Tiberian Town Charter Review Commission on charter amendments related to the planning um and zoning boards and related land use recommendations. So let me just give uh some quick background on this, so on May eighth, I received an email from Diane Sonson, it may not be premonitioned, but uh correct, she is the vice chair of the Tiberian Charter Review Commission. Um and she is, the Charter Review Commission is reaching out to all of the boards and commissions and asking them to review.
and asking them to review their portions of the charter to see if we wanna make any recommended changes as they're going through this process. Um, which is why we are going to discuss it tonight. Um, if we adopt the changes that Todd has graciously uh worked through already, um, then he would deliver those to, uh, back to the Tiberan Charter Review Commission. Uh, I was also asked to attend um a upcoming, an upcoming meeting of the Tiberan Charter Review Commission um to review those changes. Um, if we move through tonight, then that allows me to either attend on June seventeenth, uh, July first or July fifteenth. So.
Okay.
All right, do you wanna walk down there? Um, that's not accurate.
Yeah, which would have this, the backup that point out, which is.
I, I don't have either.
So Todd, you had sent uh.
I did.
Wow.
So.
I mean. I, I don't know.
Fair, no one should.
So, Todd, can you just tell us what you're recommending for charter, charter changes?
All right, there are two sections of the charter I think apply to you as you control or recognition to the town council, planning board and zoning duties. So first off, what we have on the screen is uh the planning board portion of the charter, duties and responsibilities that make no changes to. Composition vacancies, one simple change, to add the vice chairperson and secretary positions because those are called for in the general laws and that's what the footnote references. Zoning board of review, however, needed a little bit of work because of all the changes to general laws recently. I first of all added the heading of duties and responsibilities and then cleaned up some language here under duties and responsibilities to clarify, um, oh yeah, this is to make it stay long, sorry, about appeals, what appeals now go to the zoning board. I tried to leave it ambiguous. Um, but that's what we have. So, so we're proposing that duties and responsibilities shall provide for zoning board shall have such powers and duties as are prescribed by the laws of the state, town ordinance and charter. I add, where allowed by the laws of the state, the zoning board of review shall also serve as the planning board of appeal of decisions of the planning board, the planning board technical review committee and the administrative officer and shall have such powers and duties as are prescribed by the laws of the state, town ordinance and charter. We did that because, or I'm proposing that to you because the general laws changed the appeal process. Most appeals from planning boards now go to superior court, but in the event that some changes in the future, I believe in there as a potential potential duty for the zoning board. And then the composition and va- and vacancies of the zoning board is more to clean things up. Um, the zoning board of review shall consist of five members plus two alternates appointed by the town council from among the like collectors of the town. I put a period there and sort of do sentence, regular members shall be appointed for a term of five years. Said term shall be sta- staggered so that uh no more than one will expire in any given year. Alternates who shall be appointed for a term of one year may sit on a board but shall only vote if they are filling in for a regular member who is absent and they have attended all hearings on the petition. No member shall be an elected official or employee of the town. Then I add, any member of the zoning board may be removed from office by the council for due cause following a public hearing. That's from the general laws. And then to clean up language, the unexpired term of a regular member shall be filled by the first alternate and a replacement alternate member shall be appointed by the town council. The board shall annually elect a chairperson and such other officers as they deem appropriate. General laws don't identify which officers are required for zoning board. You'll see I have a footnote after the, after the first alternate. And that's because as this reads right now, it requires a first alternate, it, it takes away. I don't know what to say. I probably said it better in the footnote. This automatically makes the first alternate fill the unexpired term of a regular member who leaves. I don't know if that's what the town wants or you want to recommend to the town. Uh, I don't know if the town council wants to have the authority to choose from anyone who shall fill an unexpired term of a regular member. But this is a positive decision for you to make a recommendation on if you still want to.
So you're saying, Todd, that if there is.
If there is a vacancy in terms of regular members, that it's the first alternate that sort of moves up to the vaguely.
What about you?
Automatically.
There was an issue years ago when the town council replaced the person. I don't think we should be hoping on what zoning board should be doing, zoning board should have its own say in the matter. But there was a person that came up and was put in by the town council and was involved.
I just wanna bring it to your attention because it's unique language.
And I put the language, I made the request to have the language of the planning board in there because we lost a very good person from the planning board and they didn't have any big problem.
We don't have alternatives.
I got the door closed, but then they had a hearing before the town council.
That's my statute as well.
Well, it wasn't in there.
Okay.
Okay, so we have proposed changes, Todd. Thank you for doing that. Uh.
Is that, is that all you have, Todd?
Yes.
Um, uh, that, uh, I would, I would recommend that we, uh, we support all of those changes because what Todd is doing is basically just bringing our charter into conformity with a new state law. And as far as the alternative, the alternate member of the zoning board, I just leave that the way it is. Just leave it the way it is. And if, if the zoning board has strong opinions or, or when it's goes to the town council, if they have strong opinions, they'll make changes.
Do folks feel comfortable moving to a vote on this?
The, 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 the only other thing I'd like to add is that the last time this came up, um, we did have a discussion about, um, about changing the number of members of, on the planning board. And that was a recommendation that, um, that attorney Rugiero, um, Dean Rugiero was our, um, council at that time, Rosemary, and he recommended that nine is way too many and that we should drop that to seven or even five to be more consistent with other communities. But I just wanted to say that as a background information. I'm not suggesting that we do that. Um, I keep it at nine and town council can decide if they wanna pair us back a little bit.
And we brought up about some people wanting to pay.
Say that again.
And we also had discussions on some of the members wanting to be paid.
All on us or not?
Yeah, but not, but not the water authorities. Their word of drugs gets paid.
Not, not our demand, so we're gonna skip right over that. Okay, so, um, I, I'd like to make a motion that uh we accept the charter revisions as presented by Todd and direct Ed to deliver those to the Charter Review Commission. Um, and, um, ask the chair of the planning board to, uh,
Accept it.
Attend the, uh, most convenient Charter Review Commission meeting.
Second.
Discussion.
Uh, we have a motion and a second. Open our discussion.
Okay, discussion. Do you think it's wise that we vote on the zoning?
Yes.
Maybe even all these?
Yeah, I asked that question to Todd and Todd had a very good explanation of that because we do act as advisory capacity to the town council on all matters concerning comprehensive community plan, land use, zoning and subdivision regulations. It's only a recommendation and Rosemary, there's nothing here that's controversial.
I understand.
These is actually, that was the charter review tonight.
Oh, that's it.
We see it.
So they're also talking to us. Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? No extension, sorry, passes. Thank you. Um, okay, for uh three E amendment to land development subdivision, subdivision regulations, Article ten, design standards, uh, discussion, possible vote to schedule public hearing and authorize expenses for required notice. So we hunted on this last month. Uh, I'd like to try to reduce our to-do list here on this.
So you have done most of this. Um, you have already given us the ability to expand for advertising and to, to do it when we're, when we're ready. And we keep going back to the question that we're taking with this amendment to the subdivision regulations. We will be taking things out of zoning and so we've talked that we need to agree on the strategy for doing that. Because we can't control what comes out of zoning. We can only ask the council. And so if we place this language in subdivision, I wanna understand from you guys on the timing part of it. I also am concerned that there's other things moving through the council for zoning amendments and I don't wanna overwhelm them with too much zoning. This is, this is an extraction of language that's just getting picked up and listed and moved into subdivision, but we haven't actually talked through how we wanna go through that process. So we haven't advertised because we haven't figured that out quite yet.
That's fair. Stu, did you?
Well, I, I'm just wondering why we even need to take anything out of zoning if, uh, if it's in there now. And there's not an awful lot of language in zoning on, on designs, on architectural design standards. Um, there, there is, you know, potentially in the form-based code area. But, but, um, I know some communities in Barrington as an example have, have a language both in their zoning and in subdivision regulations on architectural design standards. So, but, but, you know, that, that was just a question to see, can we make it simpler by not even taking anything out of zoning? Just leave it there and forget about it. Um.
Do you have a response to that?
Uh, yeah, I, I think you, you, eventually you're gonna run into conflicting language. It's just inevitable. It might take a few years, but eventually you will amend one thing that will not amend the other and then we will have conflicting language. The zoning ordinance will most likely trump your subdivision regulations. So I, I, when we have it in zoning, I, the only thing that I would recommend to keep in zoning is a reference to the subdivision. So you're sent, so you're sending the reader over to the right place with the correct regulation instead of duplicating.
I, I, I agree with that, but I don't understand why this would delay a hearing. We need to have a public hearing at the planning board level, um, to talk about changes to our subdivision regulations.
Right.
When, when we have other maybe changes as well as design standards and, you know, um, group everything together into a public hearing to save, you know, to save, um, money on advertising, um, then, then I think we should move ahead. I don't think we should, you know, we should have talk about a strategy for taking stuff out of zoning. We can just send that to town council when, when we get around to it and say, hey, all we're doing, town council, is removing language from zoning, which is now gonna be put into the subdivision regulations.
What if they disagree?
It's not a big, it's not a big complicated issue.
That was my question, is what if they don't take it out? What if you send them that recommendation and they don't, they, they don't take the language out? They decide not to and then you have dual language.
Well, that, that, so, then, then we can still go ahead with, with putting it in subdivision regulations.
Well, you will, if we follow that strategy though, it's already there. Like, that's why I'm asking for a discussion of how you would like to do this. Like, do you want to arrange this so that when you are ready to do your public hearing, we're also sending the zoning request? Or do, because there is other zoning stuff going on at the same time, do we wanna package that with something else? Like, I just wanted to talk through this and get a sense from the board.
Okay. Here's my recommendation, given the late hour here, is that we're not gonna be able to have a thoughtful discussion on this. I think people are pretty tapped. I would like to ask that we move this to our July meeting and as much as possible, make sure it's earlier, as early in the agenda as possible. So we're fresh talking about this. And then can you come to the table with perhaps options laid out with pros and cons to help inform the strategy discussion? So that we're not starting from scratch. We will have had the opportunity to review some approach options, pros, cons, and we can hit the ground running, not at nine thirty. And maybe that makes sense because the town council has a lot of other zoning things going on, like I don't think waiting another month doesn't seem like a detrimental sort of step. Folks, do you agree with that? All right, we'll do that. I feel like I should put on my, uh.
Do you wanna do this part?
Let's get ready and run with the show. Voice here. Welcome to the meeting. Anyway, if you want.
Next up, election of officers. I don't think it's right that Bill has to do this, so I'll take the nomination for chairperson and the, uh, particularly the planning board.
Well, I'd like to nominate Bill Gerlach as chair.
Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Eric Dunn? Uh, I guess we took a vote. All those in favor of, wow, that was quite a shout. She doesn't want, that's for sure.
Gonna break out. We're not giving you a chance to sneak out.
All those in favor of voting for Bill Gerlach as chair, planning board? Be honest.
One extent of anxiety that I said, yes.
Very, um, can I, does anyone want to make a nomination for vice chair? Speak.
I was gonna nominate Stu, but.
I'm, 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 I'm actually, uh, I'm not going to, uh, to stand, but I wanted to nominate Dick Taylor.
So, Stu has turned it down, Dick has turned it down. Do we have any other nominations?
Missing man.
What's up?
Steve's not here.
That's not fair.
That's the way it works.
I should have come tonight.
He's, he's been talking too about it.
Oh, you, I.
He's expressed an opinion.
Yeah, he has expressed an opinion. Okay, so I would say let's table a vote on vice chair until next meeting when we have full attendance here. Um, I'd like to entertain a motion, not, not motion, nomination for secretary.
Who?
So we have V A being nominated, uh, for secretary.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Dick has seconded V A. You will take that. All right, let's move to a vote. All those in favor of V A losing secretary? With V A abstained. All right, got questions. Thanks, everyone. Way to go. Uh, appointment of liaisons in the Tiberian Water District, Stonebridge Water District and North Tiberian Water District. So we have a couple of things that, um, Tricia Burton, in her capacity while she was chair, um, were, she was also the liaison. We think it's pertinent that we backfill these as soon as possible to ensure continuity with the, these entities and the discussions taking place. Uh, so the first appointment is liaison to the Tiberian Water Districts, uh, Stonebridge and North Tiberian. Uh, would anyone, uh, like to volunteer for that? Uh, would anyone, uh, like to volunteer for that? So the question on the table is why do we need them? Uh, I do not, admittedly, why do we need a liaison to the two different water districts to question those? Trisha was serving in some capacity.
I, I think it, I think it's really important that staff, um. That, that staff and officers, um, keep an open dialogue with the two superintendents. On both the Tiberon Fire District and Stonebridge Fire District. Um, both have superintendents. Um, and it's really, really important that, that the planning board and the planning department keep an open dialogue. But I don't think it's necessary to have a formal, uh, a formal person designated as liaison to go to all of their meetings. Um, we've never done that. Um, um, we, we have established a pretty good relationship now with North Tiberon Fire District. We're talking back into Worth and sending emails back and. A, a lot of that thanks to Trisha Hilton's work. Um, we'd like to have the same relationship with Stonebridge, but I don't think it requires an official liaison. In, in fact. Trisha agrees with me on that.
Okay. Do we have any other, admittedly, I don't even know when these water, I don't even know when the water districts have their regular meetings, like, logistically, I think it's important for anyone who might be volunteering to actually know. When those meetings are taken.
So I'll only offer the perspective that I think what Trisha was doing was not an official liaison capacity. And I don't know that just because if you were to designate one, that you have to have this person attend every single meeting. But I think having a single point of contact is ideal so that we don't have members. Individually contacting the water district for whatever reason. I mean, we try to have everything go through the planning department, but Trisha had established a good working relationship with them, and I think. It would be nice to have somebody step into that role and to say to the water district, you know, Trisha's not on the board anymore, but I'm gonna step in and be that point of contact along with the planning department. If you, you know, if we need to ask questions, if we need to have that communication. I think it's beneficial to have them know one member specifically.
So why don't we do this? So, as in my capacity as chair, let me reach out to the heads of each of the water districts. Introduce myself as the chair and open up that line of communication. Um, I guess, can, Ed, can, can someone give me the contact information or?
If someone could get me the contact information for Stonebridge, that would be great, because I don't know who to call.
Tim, Tim Burn is who they've been going through.
But I.
Is it Timbers?
It's been Tim Burn at Stonebridge, I can tell you that North Tiberon meets the second Tuesday of the month, their meeting on the tenth. It is their annual meeting, there'll be elective offices. Stonebridge meets on a Monday, but I'm not sure which Monday it is.
And Bill, I can, I can assist in the contact with North Tiberon because I've been part of a lot of those conversations. Um, I'd like to tag along for you introducing yourself to Stonebridge because it would be helpful.
So we, we don't have a primary board of contact that's Stonebridge?
No.
And that is due to just?
I, we've tr- we've tried, I mean, I ended up emailing a board member in order to try to get communication. We, I've had one in-person meeting that they attended and then it kind of went radio silent after that.
Okay. Okay, so that's Stonebridge?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. He was, was, and then he wasn't, and I heard he now is again, is that right? So that might be the way to go.
Well. If that's the case, I mean, I did work with Carl when I was back from the council, when we were doing a lot of work, attrition, staff upon protections and all that sort of stuff.
Right, so that might be the way in.
Okay. So, can someone get me Tim Burn's contact information?
Hey.
And, and Carl? If we have Carl's holding information?
Probably have Carl's.
Okay, so I'll initiate an outreach, I'll cc you Ashley for continuity. Do some introductions, figure out when it might make sense to have a live conversation. Okay. Uh, liaison, so appointment of liaison to Tiberon zoning ordinance revision committee. I heard during the grapevine that we actually have a new planning board member who sits, uh, on the Tiberon zoning ordinance revision committee.
Yes.
And that is Cheryl. Um, Cheryl, would you be willing to act, um, in a liaison capacity? Okay. And so what that will, um. We would look for regular updates coming out of the zoning. Ordinance revision committee, I'll think about that for a second. Um, and then if we had. If we had need to communicate with that, we could help that. I think it's gonna, we don't have to suffer it tonight, but. Trisha was doing a lot of work to help drive the discussions there, to keep. The flow of work moving from the design revision committee to the planning board so that we can get stuff done and get over to the town council. So, um, I think that dovetails into sort of the one we've talked about. In other discussions around getting our to-do list together. Um, so in any case. We can talk more about that. Um, anybody opposed to having Cheryl act in a capacity, do we need to take a vote?
Sure.
Okay. Uh, I'll entertain a motion to appoint Cheryl Valentine as our planning board liaison to the Tiberon zoning ordinance revision committee.
A second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor? All right, get sort of listen. Um, appointment of liaisons to the North Tiberon Business Park Committee. Uh, Stu, are you able to just provide a, a quick, perhaps, overview slash update of what's going on with that?
Um, I, I missed the last couple of mentions.
All right.
So we're working towards a, uh, draft with the EDC. The, there is a subcommittee of the EDC.
Economic Development.
Yes, and so the, the, the resolution says that they're supposed to present their report to the EDC. Who then presents that report to the council. Um, we've decided to not follow that entirely because it, it's awkward. Um, so we brought the ED, the remaining members of the EDC into the final meetings of the committee. Um, and we'll be pre- basically finalizing the report by August one, so it's, we're, we're at the tail end of this.
Sure.
Um, I don't know how you, if you want to send someone into that.
So, you, given where this entity is and their plan and the fact that you are.
I'm there.
Also attending.
Yes.
I don't know if we need a.
I can look forward to you from now until the end and bring you the draft or anything.
Okay. Are folks comfortable with that?
Yes.
All right.
So. Uh, moving on to item three J approval of minutes, April of our meetings from April first, twenty twenty five and May sixth, twenty twenty five. Were there any substantive corrections that needed to happen? Janice?
I didn't find it.
Janice did not find it, Rosemary? Rosemary did not find it.
No, but I did, I, I have a minutia, like, Stonebridge is two words.
He's fixing it going forward.
All right. Ed, never again. Okay.
Or there'll be consequences.
There will be consequences.
And it's.
Okay, Stonebridge, two words.
Forget it.
It's the first time you've brought it up.
I did Janice.
All right. Okay. T-shirts will be printed next week. Uh.
Two words.
Okay, two words, all right. Um, so seeing no substantive updates, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of April first, twenty twenty five. And May sixth, twenty twenty five, um, as submitted to us by Ed. Uh, VA seconds, all those in favor? Unanimous, uh, update in, on state legislation related to land use.
Uh. So most of the bills, all of the bills, I think at this point have passed the House floor. Um, there are, most of them have, um, sister bills in the Senate. Um, I don't have answers at this moment as to what has passed through the Senate. I think it still remains to be seen.
Okay.
Which of the bills will get Senate companions that will pass out, you know, pass out of committee, whatever, but we're nearing the end and I expect. It'll happen pretty quickly in the next couple of weeks, and then we'll know what's going on.
Okay. Okay, so I would say that let's, um, get an update at our July meeting on this.
Yeah, depending on when they recess, I'll do my best to give you an update from that July meeting.
Yeah.
If they recess earlier rather than later, it'd be easy to collect all of that and summarize it before the July meeting.
And if, and if not July, then August, we should do it.
We should, yes.
Okay.
Um, last, last item. Uh, update from the Tiberon zoning ordinance revision committee. Cheryl, were you there in the last meeting?
I was, uh, right now we're working a lot on smart handles.
All right, hold on.
Fascinating, fascinating, I don't want to miss smart handles.
Yes, Ashley was there, I think, uh, three of the last four meetings.
We invited Victoria Sartini there, Tom Verotto was there, and John Frank has been several of the meetings. Uh, and we've just been going through that as, as much as we can.
Okay.
Um, Ashley has provided information from other, um, similar communities, so we're just trying to get that done.
Okay, do we have a timeline for when we might expect that next round of stuff coming to the planning board?
I would, I would say within the next two months.
Okay. Again, sort of, get to do this here.
Yep.
Um, update from the North Tiberon Business Park Committee, um, sort of.
Yeah, I just, there, there's not much more to say than that.
Okay, great. Um, Rosemary, do you like to close this out? Big microphone, Rose. Nine fifty-five.
Um, motion to adjourn, privileged motion, nine fifty-five.
All right, thank you everyone for the diligence and dialogue. Appreciate it.